Okay, all right. Good evening. Thank you. A little bit of business first. We are reconvening into open session. We were previously in closed session. And Mr. City Attorney, if you could make the announcement from closed session?
Yes, Mayor. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council entered a closed session to discuss the items previously announced and also identified on the agenda. The City Council gave direction with respect to all four matters.
Great.
No reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. So now I will close the closed session, adjourn the closed session, and welcome you to our regular meeting, six o'clock start time. And we feel very safe right now. We have the perimeter is well guarded by police and fire. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. And with that, I would love to call down Emma Schaeffler. If you would come down here. She is, I'm going to, I'm going to come on down all the way. Now, it's working now, right? I will tell you all about her in a second, but Emma, would you do us the honor of leading us in a pledge of allegiance?
Of course. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Well, would everyone please stand, which you guys are already doing? Thank you. Please place the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well done. Stay up here. Don't go anywhere. So, Emma, thank you very much. We have, we should have no doubt that an Eagle Scout knows how to lead us in the flag. So let me tell you a little bit about Emma. So Emma is the daughter of Jill and Joe Schleffler. Is it Schleffler or Schleffer?
Schleifer.
Schleifer. It's neither. It's Schleifer. She attended Pacific Elementary School, Chadwick Middle School, and is currently attending Chadwick High School. She's been active in scouting since only June of 2020, and as a member of Scouts BSA Troop 219, where her perseverance and tenacity has led her to attain the following scout ranks: Tenderfoot on August 26, 2021; Second Class on January 23, 2022; First Class, August of 2022; Star on January 2023; Life in August of 2023; and, what I got to witness, Eagle Scout on March 6 of this year. So let's give her a guess. I just wanted to say, women get it done. I'm just going to say it. Emma has earned 29 merit badges as a Scouts member. She's held leadership positions in the troop as founding historian, patrol leader, founding webmaster, ILST instructor, and national youth leadership training staff member, right? She's contributed to the community in many ways, including serving as a Chadwick School representative for the Beach Cities House District and the Youth Advisory Board, and for three consecutive years, teaching STEM and arts activities to children of migrant families. I mean, she's done, made sandwiches for Shared Bread, peer mentor and coach for UCLA Peers Program. Her resume is longer than mine. She's worked with the Union Rescue Mission, Invisible Arts. It's indivisible, isn't it? Or is it, yeah. American Martyrs Church, the Palisverdes Peninsula Land Conservancy, and food packing for the Guatemala Food Project. So she wanted to do your Eagle Scout Leadership Project that would benefit the city and community of Manhattan Beach, and she wanted to focus on youth mental health. So you made, she, I saw some of these. They're really wonderful. She made a series of five videos for her beneficiary, which is called Our Village, and the videos demonstrate the social skills techniques targeted towards neurodiverse tweens struggling with depression, anxiety, autism, ADHD, and more. So she wrote the scripts. They were grounded in evidence-based, you know, techniques, and she demonstrated her skills in leadership, organization planning, and time management with not one but five different videos. So total 35 volunteer dedicated, 35 volunteers dedicated over 300 hours to the completion of this project. So Emma, I'm just putting you on the spot for a minute. If you could tell us just a little bit about this project and why you thought it was important to do so.
Yes, of course. So no worries for putting me on the spot. I'm used to it. Basically, I really thought this was an impactful project because I've worked with this beneficiary for a really long time, I think since I was in first grade, helping out with their programs. I really felt it was important because they, these kids were just not represented, represented enough in the videos that we were showing them on how to teach them social relational skills. I thought that they would better relate to the skills and like better comprehend what they're learning if they see themselves in these videos. And because they were filmed by a couple college grad students, it was kind of hard for, you know, the 13-year-olds to understand going to get sushi or, you know, meeting after work. So instead, I thought it would be a great idea. I worked with my beneficiary to create a couple new ones with more topics that they could relate to, such as like, oh, do you want to go to the movies after school? Just things like that, small things. And because I've been part of these meetings where they've watched these videos and they're like, who gets sushi anymore? And they're just focusing on that and what, not what they're supposed to learn. So I think that, I don't know, hopefully that that makes a difference. I think it will.
Yeah, I think it will too. The ones I saw, they were trying to play video games together, and one of the kids usually would get very upset, so you had a whole script about how to get through that. Another one was sort of breaking up with a friend, right? Or, you know, creating some distance and boundaries, and I found it very useful. But no, I think that's wonderful that you observed that and then created something. I'd never been, well, I hadn't been to an Eagle Scout ceremony in a long time, and this was the first one I had attended since scouting opened up to both young boys and, or young men and women. And I have to tell you, it was a very moving ceremony, and everybody there was so proud of you. And there was this one moment where she said, you know, and I love doing this national youth leader training, which was actually really hard, but I got all my girlfriends. Now, they're all going to go do it. I guess I must be good at persuading people. She said this, and with this smile, like, who doesn't want to follow this person into battle? Because she's like, let's go, right? So I was really moved by that and inspired by your leadership. So thank you so much for joining us. Before I give you a fabulous certificate, another one. She has a whole proclamation and a wall of certificates and a city pin. If you could tell us if there's anyone in the audience tonight.
For you.
Like, anyone you know that might have supported you on your journey or given birth to you.
Thanks for that. Yes, my mom and dad are both here. He's raising, raising his hand, and my mom's waving over there.
Thank you. All right, great. Colleagues, if you could come in. Here. And, and, guys, Nina here, we'll do it like this. Good planning. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Really? Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now you can go back to scouting. Great. Okay. We're back now, just, then, that was the pledge, then we do ceremonial. I only know because I have a script here. I always get excited of, you know, and calm down about the future when I meet people like Emma. But yeah, she has a math final tomorrow, junior year math final, so we understand when you need to leave. Madam City Clerk, if you could do roll call.
Councilmember Franklin.
Here.
Councilmember Tarnay.
Here.
Councilmember Sherrillian.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser.
Here.
Mayor Haworth.
Here. Great. And now I would love to do some presentations here. Certificates of commendation, recognizing a few of our own, the Police Officer of the Year, the Firefighter of the Year, and Police Background Investigator, as well as professional, Police Professional Staff of the Year. To begin, I would like to call Chief Rachel Johnson down so that she can tell us all about Detective Brant. I believe he should come down too. Oh, he's right here. He's down. He's here.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for that introduction, Mayor Haworth. And this is Detective Dan Brant, and he is our 2024 Police Officer of the Year. And the reason why Police Officer of the Year is so special to us and to me is because you know who has no hand in voting on this? Me, right? And so the Police Officer of the Year is someone that our employees vote on internally, and so it's that police officer sworn member and our professional staff member that their peers think they're doing a great job, which I think says a lot, because it's, it's easy to do a good job for your boss, but when your peers think you're doing a good job, you're probably actually doing a really good job. And so allow me to tell you a little bit about Detective Dan Brant. He's been here with us as a Manhattan Beach Police Officer for about six years, but he worked for the City of Los Alamos Police Department for about 12 years and worked in Parks and Rec, I believe, at Los Al, before that. So he has 18 total years of law enforcement experience, and he brought, you know, quite a bit of that with him from Los Alamos. Like most people at our department, he wears a ton of hats, because we have to in order to get things done and serve our community, but also to serve each other internally. He is one of the members of our Crime Scene Investigation Team, our Peer Support Wellness Team. He's captain for the last handful of years, our Baker to Vegas Team, and that's no easy task. You have 20-plus runners and a bunch of support staff that you are trying to get to different places in the desert at the right time in order for us to have this race work properly. And in my time with Dan, working on Baker to Vegas, the effort's been top-notch. The cats have been properly herded. We've all been where we needed to be, but it's no easy feat. It looks easy in the end when you take the picture and you get your prizes, but it's not easy to get there. And Dan has been an integral member of our Baker to Vegas Relay Team. And he's also president of the Manhattan Beach Police Officers Association, which is another big hat to wear, along with those other duties, answering to the needs of all of our police officers and police sergeants. During the year, Dan works as a fraud detective, and yes, when, which is great if you're a victim of fraud, you want Dan Brant on your side, but as, in terms of detective jobs, it's one of the more difficult, because working fraud is like peeling back an onion. There's just more fraud underneath the fraud, and then you want to cry, right? So it's, it's just not a really easy task. And I've heard from multiple members of federal law enforcement agencies and of the federal, you know, the U.S. Attorney's Office about the work that Dan does and how easy it is to work with. He's, you know, encountered victims that who were scammed out of seven-figure losses. Sometimes they don't have a lot of leads to investigate, but he understands that we're going to do the absolute best we can do to get restitution for our victims, and he treats each, each case like it's a family member's case that he's investigating. He's a team player in the Detective Bureau. He works well with his peers and his supervisors, and he can always be counted on to come in, stay early, come in early, stay late, or respond for investigative call-outs. When we've needed someone to stay late on a whim till midnight, Dan's raised his hand and said, I'll be the guy. He's always willing to help out. In the last year, he's assisted in the Older Adults Police Academy. He's attended Coffee with the Cop, participated in the Ech and Catch Cadillac Converter event, played basketball in the Police Olympics. That was a year ago. Have you recovered?
No.
Okay, very good. Yeah.
2028.
He ran the Officer Swanson Memorial Run for the Orange County Sheriff's Academy, and again, he organized and captained our Baker to Vegas Relay Team. A little snippet from his actual nomination is that Dan has been the consummate leader while balancing a steady caseload in the Detective Bureau, while still being able to help organize Baker to Vegas and lead the Police Officers Association in positive direction. His leadership in guiding the POA membership through the tragic loss of Officer Swanson has been priceless. So if you'll join me in a round of applause for recognizing Detective Brant, 2024 Officer of the Year.
Thank you, Chief. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and honorable mayor for the commendation and the chief. And most of all, I want to thank my family. They're on, they're watching on TV today, but they couldn't be here. My wife, Micah, my daughter, Parker, and my son, Logan, they have been in this process with me. When you lateral from one department to another, especially with the longer travel, they're part of the process, and they've been very supportive of me. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the city of Manhattan Beach and the council here, because they always provide us lots of resources to do our job, which is one of the reasons I came here to Manhattan Beach. To my coworkers, thank you for the nomination. It means a lot to me. I, I feel like I hope I can continue to serve our members. And if I could just, every take a moment. Baldwin Park lost a police officer on May 31st. He got shot and killed. If we could just take a moment of silence for Officer Riveros from the Baldwin Park Police Department. I just wanted to do that because, Honorable, he took, he did the ultimate sacrifice, and he was shot and killed in line of duty. I just want everybody to remember that and his family. Thank you.
On behalf of all of my colleagues, we are proud to recognize you as the Police Officer of the Year. And I don't know if you have a city pin yet, but I think it looks so nice on the dark blue. We're, I, we're going to get a picture here, but I so appreciate, I gave him one. I was, I was so sly.
I too.
I so appreciate you giving a shout out to your family, as I'm sure all the folks would do, because we know that for our firefighters and our police officers, your families really do, I think, bear a lot. So thank you for that. So let's get a picture, but we are going to have to move this chair. It's really the worst setup you can imagine. Okay.
Some of those might be on the step here.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. I'm going to actually call the fire chief down and then back to you. That's what I was told.
However you want to.
Oh, I love that. Okay, Chief, no, you, no, she, I heard back and forth, so come on down, Chief Lang. Because we would like to honor firefighter Michael Shields. Go, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. I get the honor of introducing our Firefighter of the Year this year, Michael Shields, better known as Mikey to all of us. Mikey came to us after working for the Poli Fire Department and then Montebello Fire Department, before coming to his dream department and home to the Manhattan family. So, and he's only been on two years, which is testament to how good he is at his job. Like, much like PD, he's voted by his peers and because of his work ethic and his great attitude. He's kind of the go-to firefighter. We have eight probationer guys, and he's the guy to go to and get knowledge from, and like I said, always got a smile on his face, except for now when he's in front of the council. But yeah, he, he's a joy, just a shining star and a shooting star in our department. So with that, our 2024 Firefighter of the Year, Mikey Shields.
Yeah, first off, thank you, Chief. I also want to give a special thank you to all the members of the MBFD. They're constantly supporting me to reach all my career goals. Thank you to the council. Thank you to the city. It's truly an honor to serve this city and the organization here in Manhattan Beach. It's been, it was my childhood dream to be a professional firefighter. I'm glad I found a home I could be here for the next 30, 35 years. So with that being said, thank you.
Don't go away. Look, I'm reaching for a pen, or a pin, okay? Yeah, switch places there, okay? On behalf of my colleagues, we want to recognize you and thank you for all that you do and a city pin. And now the picture. And Chief, oh, yeah, you're done? Oh, thank you, Chief. Not done, done. All right, Chief. I was just told that was the order, but, so come on back down. I think they wanted to torture you. Okay, back to you, Chief.
Oh, thank you again, Mayor Haworth. And, you know, I do appreciate those extra steps, because I'm in the middle of a fitness challenge. And so it's actually you helping me, and I am so, so, so grateful.
I lived to serve.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. So I would like to introduce to you our Professional Staff Member of the Year for 2024, Background Investigator, Michelle Ariano. Michelle, if you could come on down. So everybody can see you, right? Michelle is such a hard worker and such an amazing person, but you know what Michelle does not like? Recognition. And so, so here we are, recognizing her. Michelle has worked with us at the city of Manhattan Beach since September of 2018, and she started as an office assistant. Four years later, her position was reclassified to an administrative assistant after her supervisor recognized that she was consistently taking on tasks beyond her initial role. She never voiced any concerns about these responsibilities, because she's self-motivated and she likes to be busy. In her administrative capacity, she was responsible for maintaining training records, coordinating the training of department personnel, and procuring safety equipment for department members. Additionally, while in this role, Michelle unknowingly created a comprehensive training guide for future employees. She diligently took detailed notes whenever new responsibilities arose, and she formatted them in an easy-to-follow manner. Over time, these notes became an invaluable resource for training other administrative assistants. After five years in this position, she sought a new challenge, because it's Michelle, and why would she not, right? Always trying to do more things to help out. In 2023, the department opened a full-time background investigator role in a position that we hadn't had in the department in over a decade. She successfully navigated the recruitment process and was selected for the position. Her exceptional resilience over the past year earned her the title of Professional Staff Member of the Year. She not only mastered the new skill set required of background investigators, but also trained her successor during the transition. Despite these challenges, her performance never wavered. It was always outstanding, and the Personnel and Training Division continued to run smoothly. In the last year and a half, she's conducted 21 background investigations. It's a lot, but here's the thing, 17 of them, the candidate didn't pan out, because the candidate didn't meet, didn't meet the exacting standards we have here at the Police Department. So not only did she have to learn a new role, she spent a lot of giving people the big no last year, just because we, we have such high standards here, and we will never waver in the caliber of our employees, and I'm just grateful that you continue on the excellence there. She uphold our values and standards of our agency, and she's just an invaluable asset to our team. She came to us from the private sector, and she has a really great resume that she never wants to talk about, but she truly is why Personnel and Training has been so successful. She's navigated a lot of things, worked really hard to make sure our department is trained properly and that we have all the equipment we need. Please join me in recognizing Background Investigator, Michelle Ariano.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, council. I'll keep it very short and sweet. I'm very fortunate to work with such a great department in such a great city, and I'm very lucky to work with such a great team as well. So thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Congra, can you hear me? There we go. Congratulations. It really sounds like you are a true asset, and we are all, we're very grateful, and I, I think it was wonderful, Chief, how you pointed out how many people don't, past semester, right? That's something our residents should know. So on behalf of the residents, I thank you. So here's our recommend, or commendation and a city pin. And if I could get my colleagues down here for a photo. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Yeah. Super fun to, it's important, I should say. Wait, where's, which one am I? We do a lot of recognitions up here, and I think they're all deserved, but it is really, truly, an honor to, to call out our first responders, and they do so much, and they always will, always have, always will, so thank you all. Okay, so now we are done with the ceremonial calendar, and I'm moving on to approve all the agenda and waiver a full reading of ordinances. It's been moved by Councilmember Franklin, sucketed by Councilmember Tarnay. Oh, wait, I didn't vote. That's good. Oh, there we go.
And before there's a vote, previously on Friday and, and yes, and today, with respect to item number eight, there were certain revisions, and there was an errata sheet with respect to the resolution and the ground lease amendment. And so I presume that the motion was to adopt the revised resolution and ground lease amendment.
So to the maker of the motion and second or?
Yes.
Yes. You're accepted. Okay, great. Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Right now, it's time for city council and community organization announcements of upcoming events. So up, you get one minute. It's always these, you know, arm wrestlings at the podium, but please, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Webels, and I'm here on behalf of the Manhattan Beach Library. Our teen study hall hours started this week and will continue next week. We open our big meeting room for the extra space for teens to come and study, and there are free snacks. Very important. Please check our website for the hours and days, and our summer discovery program started on June 1st. It runs through August 10th, and the official kickoff will be this Saturday, June 7th, 11 to 1 p.m. on the library patio. We will have games, crafts, and giveaways to inspire you for the summer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Janet Jones, former library commissioner, and I'd like to introduce Sidney Huber, who is also a former library commissioner and a junior at Miracosta. We are here because we believe that kindness is in short supply and that Manhattan Beach can do something to make it better. And so my family made a donation to the L.A. County Library Foundation to purchase 60, nearly 60 children's books that have to do with kindness and compassion. I'm happy to say they have made it to the library. And in fact, we are here because they are on display as of today for the next week to just let people know they can grab a book. We want parents, grandparents, caregivers to read a book, get inspired, get kinder, get more thoughtful. And so these are some of the books that you will read. There's also a book list available. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One of, one of them was Saint Valentine, the Kindhearted, and Folk Tales for a Better World. What is this one? Let's fill this world with kindness? All right. Thank you so much. Okay. All right, welcome.
Good evening, council. We're the Sepulveda Safety Project from Miracosta High School. I'm Leila Yasmani. This is Zoe Melinger and Claire Jiang. As you know, in the past six months, there have been three fatal accidents within the two-mile span of Sepulveda Boulevard between Hermosa and Manhattan Beach. We have conducted many, lots of research and surveys to help solve this problem. So over the past two weeks, we surveyed Miracosta students, staff, and community members. The average safety rating they said for Sepulveda was just 2.87 out of 5. Top concerns they had included drunk drive, drunk driving, poor lighting, and a lack of crosswalks. We also interviewed a local activist and traffic engineer, Eric Sanblee. Both agreed the issue is urgent, with a lack of awareness between drivers and pedestrians at the core. We believe that it is, it's urgent to prioritize the safety of Sepulveda as it's a busy street with the streets lining up with stores such as Target, restaurants such as Dunkin', Taco Bell, Panda Express, and it's a place where people do want to cross. And we urge that we have the implementation of more pedestrian safety features, and such as traffic lights, even more urgent traffic light changes, and more pedestrian crosswalks in order to ensure the better future of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before you all leave, remember, city clerks, it's one-minute community announcements, but I would have given you more time, because I want to be sure that we have your names, because I think it's extraordinary that we have students working on this issue too. And I'd love to shout out to our traffic engineer, because he is, I'll just, I'm going to say it quickly, and, you know, we have, Caltrans has met with us, and they are going to be doing a site visit with our traffic engineer on Friday. We are on this. We feel the urgency too, but wow, kudos to you. But so if you could make sure somebody has your name, so we can keep you in touch, and if we do any kind of subcommittee, we bring you guys in. That would be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, good. They're going to pass it. They're going to pass it over to you. Give names and emails. Okay? Thank you, thank you. And for others coming up, it's one minute. If you have longer, you're going to do it in public comments at three minutes. Okay. Mr. Bell, I know you, I know you know the rules. Or the procedure.
Yes. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members, City Officials, Mr. Lee. My name is Bobby Bell. I am the WM Outreach and Educator for Recycling. Just wanted to give you guys a quick heads up. Three weeks away, but I wanted you guys to know about it. On the 21st, we will have our second paper shredder of the year. Fingers crossed this year, this time it doesn't pour rain the entire time. Open and free to all Manhattan Beach residents and business owners. We ask three banker boxes is the max. No clips. To stay in the car situation, drive-through, we'll take care of it. We'll handle it for you. All your paper will be securely shredded and recycled. That's all I got. Wishing you guys all God's blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, and members of the public. My name is Alexandria Latrani. I'm the Communications and Civic Engagement Manager. I'm here to announce two fantastic events that the City of Manhattan Beach is proud to host. There are two special Juneteenth events this year. First, please join us for our annual Manhattan Beach Juneteenth Ceremony on Thursday, June 19th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Bruce's Beach Park. And this meaningful ceremony will feature remarks from Supervisor Holly J. Mitchell as well as our very own Mayor Amy Thomas-Hoaworth as we gather at this historically significant location to honor African-American history and celebrate freedom and community. Additionally, we'll be hosting a Juneteenth celebration and concert on Sunday, June 22nd, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Polywog Park. This celebration will feature a vendor village showcasing talented artisans, a variety of food trucks, all ages, art activities, a poetry slam by the Black Scholars Union of Miracosta High School, and DJ stylings of DJ Sladeros, and unforgettable performance by, and I'm super excited about this, look them up, by Dr. Marcus Norris of the Southside Symphony. We encourage everyone to attend these important commemorations as we come together and honor the past and celebrate what freedom means today. And you can find out more information at our, on our website. It's manhattanbeach.gov/Juneteenth.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Liz LaFune, and I welcome city officials and thank you for letting me be here again to tease our Class of 2000 Time Capsule opening on June 28th at 2:00 p.m. Tonight, and you can see we have a QR code up there next to the picture of our lovely Time Capsule that is on Veterans Parkway, and that's where our celebration is going to begin at 2:00 p.m. I want to give a shout out to our project manager, Cynthia Cohen, who has really rallied those of us that are left out of that picture in Manhattan Beach. And that would be Steve Nicholson, Candy Duncan, Merritt Shukri, Dave Maggard, me, Gary Osterhout, and Janet Jones, who's currently with Leadership Manhattan Beach, has been a great help, and of course Kathleen Terry, who is actually having a fantastic vacation, I think, in Europe right now. But we have been really excited getting together and creating a nice agenda of a little bit over an hour that day. I would also like to say that we have unearthed, excuse the pun, the list of possible contents, which was, you know, it was 25 years ago. It was hard to remember. There are potentially 70 items that could have made it into that Time Capsule, and some of us will be seeing a little preview of what actually ended up in there very soon. But then the public will get to see what ultimately ended up, and that's what the QR code is for, to let us know you'd like to come and also to participate in a little contest where you can guess 10 items that might be in there from the year 2000. Mm-hmm. So we would just like to see everybody there that can make it. I super appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks, Liz. Any other community announcements at this point? And okay, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public comments. So this is for three minutes per person, and you may provide public comment on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction, including items on the agenda. But know that if you do make a comment now on something that's on the agenda, you don't get another three minutes when the item comes up. So it's like we like to say, no two bites at the apple, but we want to hear from you. So whether it's now or later, you choose. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is John Huganen. I've been a resident of Manhattan Beach for 43 years. Three years ago, I decided to take advantage of some of the activities offered by the Older Adults Program in Jocelyn Center, and I may be one of the oldest people here. The only problem was the variety of wonderful programs offered, and there are 52 activities on this calendar. You multiply that times 12, and, no, there are 85 on this. Excuse me. You multiply it times 12, you got over 1,000 activities we can choose from every year. And it is absolutely fantastic. Arts and crafts, social clubs, educational things on your physical well-being, trips. We take one-day trips with transportation provided. And I just couldn't pick a better organization to be involved in. And let me ask you a question. How would you like to have the challenge of selecting 52 movies to be shown on Fridays to a category, to a group of 65 to over 85-year-old people and get away with it? Well, there's one person on the staff here that is absolutely phenomenal, and she's responsible for all of that, and that's Mary McCabe, and I want to thank you for her services. She is a wonderful person. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Julie Justice McGinnity, and I'm here on behalf of Friends of the Senior and Scout Community Center, and I could not have teed myself up better. But the last speaker, the only constraint on our fabulous older adult programming in Manhattan Beach is physical space, which is what I'm here to talk about. So as you know, our organization is partnering with the city. We are a not-for-profit organization that is coming together with the city to build a new intergenerational community center on the site of the Scout House in Live Oak Park. When not in use by the city's older adult program or by scouts, this facility will provide much-needed additional meeting and programming space for all of the community-based organizations in our city. So first of all, I want to thank all of you for your support of this project. Mayor Pro Tem Lesser came to our Girl Scout Court of Honor last month, and he suggested to me that it was probably time for another public update on what's going on. So that's why I'm here this evening. As most of you will also recall, last summer and fall, we engaged in a value engineering process to reduce the cost of construction while still maintaining our existing 7,000-square-foot footprint and all of the building functionality that we wanted, the interior and exterior aesthetics. So our design team, the Tomorrow Design Team, has submitted 100% designed plans on January 17th, and that reflected these value engineering updates and changes. And our project lead from Public Works, Marzena Lokowska, communicated comments and corrections to the Tomorrow Team in March, and we've been working through those corrections and additional details and specifications over the last 10 weeks. So coordination with the city arborist has been taking place, finalizing the hardscape that is going to work in the courtyard and still maintain and protect the health of that large pine tree that we have at the center of the courtyard. We've submitted our plans to County Health Department because the city staff wanted the kitchen to be commercially, commercial-grade. So that required another level of approval. We've been pursuing that, as well as adding additional detail to low-voltage signage and landscape plans. And I only have 11 seconds left, so I just want to say to you all, because I know you're looking at the CIC tonight, that we are making good progress on this project. Resources that you have applied to it in the past will be used. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie, and thanks for the update. And great idea, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you for allowing me to attend that event in your stead because you were unavailable.
I know, I know. And I hate, I hate to miss scouting events.
I know.
I know.
He did a lovely job.
He didn't wear a sash, though. Ray, sorry.
Two things. First of all, for the safety of pedestrians, if you look at old-school cars, and Joe, I know you've got one, those headlights will light up stop signs. Modern cars will not because the lights are designed to not blind oncoming drivers, so they only come up to about here. And so if you look at most of the pedestrian accidents, they're generally at night because the drivers don't see them until it's too late. So I think there must be a better approach to this because we're both drivers and passengers, or pedestrians. And so we really should let the pedestrians know they're invisible. Because, and not, when you start thinking about it, it's like you don't see them until it's really way too late. And so they need to be aware of that, and the e-bikes too, because they're all black and the headlights don't light them all up. So that becomes a big challenge. So I think it needs to be more of an educational thing to the pedestrians and all of us to, you know, look both ways, you know, and know that you're not very visible unless you're wearing white pants. You know, you're not going to be visible, but even still, you know, how far out are you invisible? And at what point do you, by the time you become visible, it's way too late. Second thing is SP 79, they're going through to the, to the final stages. The bill is being cut, which means I think their winner is trying to negotiate and buy votes. Let me take this out. Will you vote for it now? We want to block that thing in any which way we can. And so anything we can do at the last minute here would be great. I heard the City Attorney of Los Angeles put out a big opposition letter, and he was stating how much it would cost the City of Los Angeles to implement this stuff. It's billions in infrastructure they'd have to put in place, you know, to pay for this bill, you know? And this is supposed to go through because, oh, there's no funding required. Oh, really? Shocker. So anything we could do to fight that would be great, but you know, we're, we're doing everything we can to get out there and notify people and call up all the senators and all that, but we need people to fight for blocking it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Hi, my name is Scott Janofsky. Been Manhattan Beach resident for 25 years, brought up three kids here in Manhattan Beach. The city decided to work on the memorials. The, I believe this is the World War II Korean Memorial, and I think what's happened is they've, really good effort to get a company in that works on these memorials, except they missed a lot. So, okay, so if you look at the corner there where the two pieces are put together, you see there's a chip in there. It broke off. Something very simple to fix. You got to put a wood board around it, it would take care of it. But now let's go to the other memorial, the 9/11 memorial that I built. This is what it looks like today. Overgrown, rusted, the, let me keep going on this. So now, one of the things that the restoration company wants to do is redo the bench, then want to sand it down and refinish it. Shouldn't do that. Should leave it the way it is. It's safe, it's fine. This is the plaque that's up there. You see the left-hand, the left-hand corner there? That's where someone tried to wedge it, put a screwdriver in and pop the plaque off to steal that from the city. Here's our bench now. I'm going to skip through this real quick. You can see this is looking underneath the plaster. This was not addressed by the restoration company. We have to go back with the restoration company, or I've called another company in to see if they want to come in and take a look at this. This all has to be fixed and repaired. The steel has to be polished. Now, this is what it looked like on day one. How do I go back? Okay. So this is what it looks like today. Notice that the concrete, the black concrete has faded. And this is what it looked like when we first built it. They didn't address any of that in their restoration report, but here's, here's something that's very important. I don't think restorations like this should be done strictly by outside company. This is something great for the residents to do in the city. We have the best contractors in the country living here in the city, the best architects living here, landscapers. We don't need to go to outside companies. And I know you have a regulation with RFPs. Like when I built this, I had to go through the RFP, the whole process. It took us six months to do it, and I won it anyway. So we can do it with our residents. It's something very important, and I think if we let the city know that we're doing this, the people will come out and help. You can see how the concrete is faded, was nice and bright there. Unfortunately, the weather has taken its toll. The landscaping is done with sprinklers, over-sprinkling onto the site, onto the concrete. It needs to be repaired and fixed. The, I believe it's Public Works or, I'm not sure the exact department, they, they reached out to me for plans to, to, see if I, I didn't have plans, but I had pictures. So I met with the gentleman the other day, and he said that we're going to meet again, and I'm going to meet with the restoration company. But I think we should put this out to the public and let the public work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you did initially. It's beautiful. One of the things I'm very proud of in our community. Hello, Mr. Sims.
Hello, Mayor. Council members, thank you for having me. I erased pretty much all my notes. What I was going to say is we're going to talk about trash enclosures, and strangely, we just came from a trash enclosure fire behind one of our restaurants at Fishery with Dynamite, so about an hour and a half ago. So first of all, thank you, Fire Department, for putting it out. It really is a game changer for us as it's a detached trash enclosure. So if it had been attached to the restaurant, it would have closed our business and many others for, you know, six to 12 months as we, as we regrouped.
Wow.
I know. I don't even know what to say anymore. Like, it's bizarre. It's like, this is the most bizarre time I've ever really experienced. So my notes, we're going to say, please help us find central locations for trash enclosures outside of our businesses, building them inside of our restaurants, provide space-saving for obviously trash being on the streets, but more of a fire hazard for, for inside. We have no idea how it starts, honestly, and we'll ideally figure out. But as well, there's opportunities to share spaces between restaurants and between people that do have private property outside of, of their restaurants. So it would be great if we could actually collaborate on those, not have it actually tied to the deed of the property because it'll never happen as no landlord or owner of a property in Manhattan Beach wants to have a forever deed attached to their property to share trash. So if it could be more of a interim deal. You know, strangely, I was going to advocate for less costly trash enclosures, so I spent a lot of time looking at trash enclosures today. And center block walls, non-combustible roof with a fire sprinkler system that, that is activated when, you know, it's, it's in the trash enclosure, that makes total sense. And I also had a bunch of recommendations and, and comments that the staff report reflects today. So once again, Mike Sims, owner of Restaurants, Downtown Business Association, North Manhattan Beach Business District, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. That really is strange timing, and thank you for being here. Okay, other public comments here in chambers. Okay. Seeing no more in chambers, I will turn to Zoom. They all, you know, digital Zoom.
No request on Zoom.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to close public comment. We're going to move on, I believe, to the consent calendar. So I believe we just need a motion to approve. It's been moved to accept consent calendar as is by Councilmember Lesser, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Franklin.
And Mayor, once again, with respect to item number eight, there is a revised resolution and granted, excuse me, ground lease.
Right.
That's part of the motion, correct?
It is correct.
That is part of the motion.
Okay. All right, so call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
So there were no items removed from the consent calendar. We'll move on to public hearings. Item number 14, we are to conduct a public hearing and consideration of an informational report and presentation regarding the status of vacancies and recruitment efforts pursuant to AB 2561. There's no budget impact. Human Resource Director Lisa Jenkins.
Yes, good evening, City Council. I'm Lisa Jenkins, your Human Resources Director, and pleased to be before you tonight to present on employee vacancy rates as well as citywide recruitment and retention efforts. This is a new requirement under AB 2561, so I'll tell you a little bit about what the new requirements are, as well as what the legislative intent is. So this Assembly Bill amends the Myers-Millieus-Grown Act, which governs our employer-employee relations in the state of California for public agencies. And what it requires is an, at least, annual public hearing on vacancy report, vacancy rates, recruitment, and retention efforts prior to the adoption of the agency's budget. And that's why I'm here before you tonight in advance of you hearing the budget item. And it requires, like I mentioned, a public hearing and a report. It also requires, or allows, an opportunity for our labor associations to present at the same meeting. And so all of our employee labor associations or bargaining units were notified of this hearing and notified of their opportunity to also present. Now, if the vacancy rate for one employee association exceeds 20%, then there's additional obligations. So then the bargaining unit can ask the city to present on additional recruitment details, as well as opportunities to improve compensation and working conditions for employees in the bargaining unit. So the purpose of this legislation was to address what was referred to as a widespread and significant problem of job vacancies within the public sector, as they impact service delivery. And they impact service delivery directly, but also if an agency has very high vacancy rates, and those can be in a particular work section or, or department, that can put an additional workload on the employees who are carrying that workload, and that can lead to increased burnout and exacerbate these staffing challenges with public service delivery. So this bill was an attempt to address that issue and ensure that public agencies are appropriately staffed. I wanted to talk a little bit about just the trends that we've been seeing in the labor market since the pandemic. So obviously, unemployment rates were higher during the pandemic. Coming out of the pandemic, there was a phenomenon that was referred to as the Great Resignation. And this was when, you know, following the pandemic, where individuals tended to remain in place in their agencies, there was a significant increase in resignations, and this sort of transcended industry. More people left positions to seek other opportunities, to reevaluate what their career paths were. And that happened coming out of the pandemic in 2022, 2023. And so with increased, higher than historic inflation, so very high inflation as well in the past several years, as well as, following that period, jobs were reduced, unemployment rates, both on a regional level as well as a national level decreased, so this resulted in what we call a job seeker market. So meeting, there are more positions out there than people who are available to take them, and especially for difficult-to-fill positions where there's specific qualifications and requirements. This, this can result in, you know, sort of the ball being in the job seekers' court, and that means that agencies have to ramp up their efforts to stay competitive. And particularly in our police officer positions, we've seen in neighboring jurisdictions, those efforts ramp up in the past several years, and this can take the shape of large signing bonuses, which we've talked about before with the City Council, as well as higher-than-usual increases, salary increases. So we've seen some of our neighboring agencies as recently as a few weeks ago, and in the past several years, giving double-digit increases within one year to try to remain competitive. So to talk a little bit about our recruitment and hiring trends within the city, and I know that I've spoken to the council about this on several occasions in the past, we have seen the number of positions filled increase over the past three years, well over historic levels. And that's been about an average of 70 positions per year since 2022. And just to put that in perspective, that's about, that's annually about 20% of our full-time employees that are, you know, new in their positions. Not necessarily new to the city, because that also includes promotions, but new to their positions. So there are some recruitment and hiring statistics within the staff report that are not on one of these slides, but if you'd like to take a look at those, it's on page 736 of the packet, but the chart is a little easier to look at in the Legistar format, and that's the chart that summarizes some of these trends that I'm discussing this evening. So what that resulted in is, and I've talked to the council about this before, almost 50% of our employees have four years or less with the city. So that illustrates the amount of turnover, the amount of new individuals into their positions that we've had in the past several years. We've had a number of total positions filled increase, as well as the number of promotions increase, which is a positive aspect for employees who have an opportunity to take on new roles. Those have increased as well over the past several years. And despite all of these increased demands, we have put into place several efficiencies and reevaluate, reevaluated our selection processes, and we've significantly reduced our time to recruit. And so that's defined as when we open the position to when we refer a list of candidates to a hiring department. So as I mentioned, we're continually evaluating our hiring processes and looking at ways to increase efficiency and relook at the way we conduct recruitment and selection, improve our reach, as well as the quality of candidates, and then specifically to look at our other pipeline programs to full-time city employment. So some of the things that we've done over the past several years, in 2020, we implemented NeoGov for online application, as well as applicant tracking through the selection process. And that was an effort to move from paper applications that we were still utilizing in 2020 to an online platform for conducting that applicant management. As I've mentioned to you before, we've had stable staffing levels in HR in our full-time equivalents, but we have had the opportunity to bring onboard some part-time employees in HR to, that have been dedicated to overseeing our recruitment efforts, and that's been a, a key step in ensuring that we're able to try to keep up with this current labor market we're in. And I mentioned candidate pipeline programs. So we've actually reduced our reliance on temporary agency contracts for administrative support positions by developing our own internal pool of temporary employees. And so what we do is we actually interview and bring on to our HRAS system our own employees who are able to take on temporary or part-time roles within the city. And we've had situations where, you know, an employee called one day, said they were not going to work the next day, and we're going to be out for a period of time, and we've had someone from that office assistant pool that was already vetted able to start the next day. And through that program, we've had individuals who have had exposure to different departments within the city, and we've also had individuals take on full-time employment following their initial experience with the city. There's been the creation of a fire apprentice program for civilian fire inspectors within the fire department, as well as reestablishing and reinvigorating the police intern program. And as an example, of three police interns that were hired last year, two of them have been offered positions as academy trainees, and one individual has been offered a civilian, sorry, professional staff support role that they've taken on. We've also looked at just the way we do testing, so reevaluated some of the tests that we give in order to streamline recruitment and to allow individuals pathways to city employment. Just as an example, historically, the test, the city exam for maintenance worker consisted of a written exam, and there were individuals working in part-time capacities in the city who were not able to pass that written exam. And by changing that exam to a more job-related exam, a performance test, some of these individuals who had been employed part-time were now eligible for full-time roles with the city. So that is one way in which we try to bring individuals on to city employment and establish a pipeline of individuals who can take on our full-time roles. And so we have talked with council on several occasions in the past about the recruitment and retention landscape, and the council has been supportive of recruitment and retention initiatives to assist with our ability to attract and retain employees. The council previously has reevaluated both recruitment bonuses for new employees, police officers, as well as other hard-to-fill positions, as well as the bonuses for individuals who refer successful police officers. You've also approved some benefits and wellness perks that would be appealing to applicants and something that could differentiate the city in recruitment. And then the labor agreements that you approved on tonight's agenda are another step in remaining competitive and offering salary and benefit increases to remain competitive in the current So to specifically discuss our vacancy rates, on this slide, you'll see our overall vacancy rate is 10.06, so just about 10%. And this is a breakdown of our vacancy rates by our employee bargaining units or labor associations. This data is as of May 21st, 2025. That was the most current that we could, we could have before our agenda was posted last week. So I'll let you take a look at that breakdown. I won't go through each bargaining unit one by one. And one other note that I'll just share, you'll see the overall budgeted positions, 348. The elected officials are not included in this vacancy calculation, although the elected officials are included as full-time equivalents in the overall city budget. So if you're noticing a difference between those numbers, that's what it is. And then this last slide is our vacancy rates by department. And so the same totals at the bottom, but this is broken down by department. One thing that I will note is, obviously, in smaller departments, one or two vacancies can make a big difference in a percentage. And we were also fortunate to have two full-time hires in community development and one in finance just this week. So obviously, vacancies are constantly changing when people leave city employment, when people come onboard. So this is a point-in-time snapshot for the purposes of delivering this report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that thorough report, colleagues. Are there any questions? Let me see. Okay. Oh, we have to conduct a public hearing before. Hold on, let me get back to my screen. Is there anybody from the public at this time that would like to speak to this issue in chambers? We can now, I'll, I'll come back to your question.
Oh, okay.
Because I, I moved too fast, sorry, but.
I moved too slow.
Oh, wow. Well, look at us, we're so accommodating. Are there any comments on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, but I'll turn to my colleagues, Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you. Thank you for that detailed report. What was it, something about, it was earlier on, that if something's over 20% vacancies, can you explain that again, please?
Sure. So part of the new law that requires this public hearing is that if the vacancy rates in any individual employee bargaining unit, so that means any labor association exceed 20%, there's additional requirements. Essentially, the association can ask the city to also include in the report recruitment details, like the number of days positions have been open, number of applications you've received, as well as efforts that can be made essentially to improve compensation in terms of conditions for employees in that bargaining unit. So we don't meet that 20% threshold for any of our employee bargaining units at the current time.
Okay, great. And then I was interested to hear more about the part-time. Is that we have part-time people there, and then you look to them sometimes if, to fill, to fill positions full-time, or?
Yeah, so all of our full-time positions, with the exception of non-civil service positions, require a competitive selection process. So we conduct a selection process, could include interviews, could include written exams, performance tests, things like that, to result in an eligible list. What I was referring to was what we call pipeline programs. So it's opportunities to bring individuals onboard in part-time capacities to gain experience, to gain exposure, to provide support for city operations. And oftentimes, those individuals, once they worked here, are interested in full-time positions. And we've had instances, many instances, where those part-time employees then compete for the full-time position and are successful in the recruitment process. And that's an additional way to attract individuals to city employment and then have them come onboard as full-time employees.
Got it. Okay, do, do you have an idea of the number of part-time that we have?
Number of part-time total, or number of part-time?
Part-time employees that we have at any given time.
Oh, sure. Yeah, the number of part-time fluctuates by season. Obviously, we have more for summer programs. It's typically around 150 to 200 part-time employees throughout the city.
Really? Wow, okay.
And I should say, that's a good point, that the, the data that you reviewed for this report, we're just talking about full-time vacancies, because that's what we track in position control.
Okay. And so we, we hear a lot about our challenges in, in hiring people. Do you see any, you know, I know you just wrote this report, but do you see anything on the horizon to where, you know, people would be getting back to work, they would be wanting to continue that path they were on before? Anything like that, that, you know, looking forward six months to a year from now, that maybe we can help you prepare?
Um, can you, I'm sorry, can you just ask the question?
Well, just, I mean, these COVID and post-COVID, you know, years have been very challenging. So just what could, you know, if you had the crystal ball, do you see, you know, employment trends? You know, people are coming back, they're, you know, are they coming back? Are they, are we able to accommodate, you know, remote working, or, you know, just something that we can kind of get an idea to look for?
Yeah, so I would say that probably the majority of employees who maybe weren't looking or have come back to work since that, you know, heightened unemployment and kind of heightened, I guess, what I would call is, you know, individuals reconsidering career paths and things like that. I think the majority of those individuals have come back to the workplace. And so, especially in the public sector, I think it's a challenge, it's more of an opportunity to consider these types of programs that could help both retain people and also attract people to differentiate us from other similarly situated employers. Because in the public sector, like... Because in the public sector, like, you know, for example, like you mentioned, telework, work schedules, employee benefits that might provide us a little bit more of a competitive advantage over other agencies, those things can be helpful. And as I mentioned, council has considered and approved some of those things in the past. I know it's probably like a little too late to keep talking about the birthday holiday, but that's one of the things that other agencies don't have, and, you know, the city council approved a year or two ago. And things like that, when somebody is seeking employment, it's sort of like adding up all of the different factors that relate to their employment. So it's not just one thing. I think it's the city council doing what you're doing and continually evaluating what we can do to stay competitive and coming back to reconsider those things when it's appropriate. And we do have flexibility with telework in some positions. However, many of our positions, there really isn't a telework option. Obviously, our frontline public safety, many of our positions even here at City Hall that support, you know, a customer-facing function, as well as obviously our field staff in public works and parks and rec. For just the nature of the jobs, many of our positions don't lend themselves to teleworking.
Okay. I know we have a referral bonus for employees who refer police officers. How about for other staff positions?
We have not, we have not yet approved a referral bonus for other staff positions.
Okay, great, thank you.
And before I turn to Councilmember Shirleyan, I think the point of this mandate, if you will, AB 2561, is to make sure that we are not, you know, that our vacancy rate is not so high. And if it is, then we should look at what we could do to recruit and attract more people. And I think what your report is saying is, we're pretty well in line, like, we're doing pretty well. So, but I'll let Councilmember Shirleyan ask his questions and then...
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, and thank you for the report. I really like the fact that we're able to hear this information. I guess further dialogue would be if we can see this maybe type of information more frequently, but that's for another topic. I know this isn't a report about, to sit here tonight to talk about how we can, you know, retain employees, but that is, you know, a concern of mine. I'm looking at the staff report on page 736, as you mentioned, the table there. You know, are we doing enough to retain our employees? I see the separations for fiscal year '25 at 34, and only 17 of those, so half of those were voluntary. So are we, are we learning from, you know, as individuals resign, what it takes to keep them here?
Sure, and I'd be happy to talk a little bit about those numbers, just to clarify, because it can get a little confusing. Separations total includes voluntary resignations, but we actually have retirement in a separate category. And the reason for that is because, although the timing can vary a little bit, typically when somebody's ready to retire, it's just their retirement date is not, like, we're not looking at how we can retain that individual generally, right? So that's the reason we separate out voluntary resignations, and that doesn't include retirement. So that's, that's what you really look at as the employees, that, you know, you maybe have left to seek another opportunity or left, you know, without retiring. So if you look on that chart that you're looking at, the voluntary resignations in 2022, fiscal year 2022, were at their highest. And they've actually decreased a bit in the past several years. Certainly, though, it's something that, you know, as I mentioned, as a council, you have the opportunity to continue to evaluate, you know, are there additional avenues to retain employees in their positions?
Okay. No more questions.
Okay, great. I've made a motion to receive and file this report. It's been seconded by Councilmember Franklin. If there's no more questions, I'll call for the questions. Okay?
Motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody okay to move on to item number 15? Okay, so now we will conduct a public hearing and consideration of a resolution, excuse me, regarding the proposed five-year capital improvement program and consideration of a resolution for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, fiscal year 2029, 2030. Public Works Director Lee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. We are pleased to present a proposed five-year capital improvement program for your consideration for adoption tonight. And we'll kick it off with our acting city engineer, Gilbert Gamboa, giving the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Haworth and city council members. My name is Gilbert Gamboa. I'm the acting city engineer for the Public Works Department, and tonight I'm pleased to present a recap of the proposed five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2026 through 2030 for the city council consideration. This plan reflects the city council's continued commitment to investing in critical infrastructure, community amenities, and long-term sustainability. So I want to take a minute to acknowledge and thank the engineering division management analysts and project managers for their hard work in compiling the CIP, and more importantly, for their work in executing the CIP projects themselves. I would also like to thank the finance department for their assistance in balancing the CIP. And with that, the CIP plan was developed to meet regulatory and grant deadlines, to assess community needs and priorities, aligned with strategic goals outlined by the city council's work plan, and to evaluate financial impacts. So the most common factors taken into consideration in making priority decisions include urgency, community impact, economic benefit, feasibility, sustainability, and asset preservation. So we also balance priorities by ensuring regulatory compliance, including state and federal mandates, and most importantly, reinforcing public health and safety. So the CIP approval timeline, the approval process included, includes a comprehensive review with public engagement and runs parallel with the city's proposed operating budget timeline. The proposed CIP was reviewed by the Planning Commission on April 23rd to ensure conformity with, and consistency with the city's general plan, followed by the Parking and Public Improvements Commission review on April 24th. City council reviewed the draft CIP during public meetings on May 13th and May 20th, including a detailed study session. And tonight's public hearing marks the final step before formal adoption. In response to city council's direction on May 20th, the following key revisions have been incorporated into the CIP. Number one, a reallocation of $1 million from the 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard project pools will result in increased CIP reserve fund balances of $1.5 million in fiscal year 2026 and 2027, $2 million in fiscal year 2028, $3 million in fiscal year 2029, and $4 million in fiscal year 2030. Second revision was the City Hall Employee Lounge Project was advanced from fiscal year 2028 to fiscal year 2026 by reallocating $100,000 from the city facility renovations project in the CIP fund. And lastly, considering a new project addition for replacing the upper pier lot railings in fiscal year 2028 with an estimated budget of $700,000 under the state pier and lot fund. So a five-year snapshot of the five-year CIP, the CIP outlines approximately $198.7 million in planned investments across 110 capital projects that support critical infrastructure, facilities, and community enhancements throughout the city. So $93.3 million was previously appropriated. $27.5 million is being requested to the fiscal year 2026, and the remaining $67.6 million is programmed across fiscal years 27 through 30. So the five-year CIP is structured across 10 major funding categories. So each funding category has strict eligibility criteria, and many projects must meet those specific funding requirements. So we've worked closely with finance to ensure all project, all projected funding allocations are realistic, given current revenue limitations. And as a quick reminder, the CIP is our planning document. If figures beyond 2026 are projections, they help us forecast future needs, but actual budgets will be refined annually as priorities and funding sources become clearer. Likewise, as individual projects are brought before council at various phases of their project life, the full financial view is typically included as a budget and expenditure summary attachment in each respective staff report. The CIP is our best foot forward at planning for the future. So here's a brief overview of each funding category. The CIP fund has 38 projects at approximately $27 million total, and this fund supports a wide range of general capital projects that do not fall under more specialized funding streams. These include parks, public facilities, and non-grant projects. So next, there are street sidewalks and the right-of-way fund. Here we have 28 projects at a total of $51.5 million. So this fund is dedicated to street and sidewalk rehabilitation, ADA ramps, pavement management, traffic signals, pedestrian safety enhancements, which are funded through local returns such as gas tax, Measure M, Measure R, Prop C, and supporting grants. Next, we have parking fund. It has seven projects at $8.7 million total and supports the maintenance and rehabilitation of the public parking facilities, and is funded through parking meter revenues. We also have the state pier and lot fund, so that has two projects at a total of $1 million. It includes enhancements to the pier and the pier parking lots, including the new upper pier parking lot railing replacement project. Next, we have grants and outside funding, so this has 10 projects at a total of $6.9 million. So projects supported by Measure A, CDBG, community project funding, and other external sources are included in this funding source. The next five funding categories start with Measure W, five projects here at $31.7 million. So this focuses on the safe, clean water program, which funds stormwater initiatives that improve water quality and increase our local water supply. Then we have our water fund at 13 projects at a total of $24 million. So this Water Enterprise Fund supports annual water main replacements, pump stations, and reservoir improvements. Next, we have street lighting and landscape. This has one project at $375,000. This is just an annual allocation for citywide streetlight maintenance. And finally, we have the storm drain fund at 11 projects at $7.4 million. So that includes drainage system capacity improvements and compliance with MPDES regulations. And lastly, we have our sewer fund at nine projects totaling about $30 million. So the Sewer Enterprise Fund focuses on upgrading aging lift stations and maintaining the sanitary sewer system. So with that, to conclude, staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 25-0073 approving the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2026 through 2030. And with that concludes the presentation. We're here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. I'm going to, could I go back to the vote cast? Okay, Councilmember Lesser.
Gil, how would you assess the staff capacity in the Public Works Department to execute on this capital improvements project program?
So as far as staff capacity, we try to balance that between full-time staff employees and the engineering to carry out the actual project management. They could have anywhere from, you know, four up to 10 projects on their plates. We also have, we also supplement that staff with on-call consultants for both construction management inspection services, for design services, and for on-call PM as we need it.
I guess what I'm asking is for an honest assessment on whether there's staff capacity to implement and execute the number of projects that we have here, because the total budget is what? Why don't you restate for the public what the budget is?
Total budget is $188.7 million. It's definitely a robust, a robust CIP, you know, very aggressive for a five-year term. But I think Director Lee would like to add some more.
I'm gonna say what Gil doesn't want to say. This is gonna be, it's challenging for us. So we have a lot of projects. We've got, currently we have some vacancies that we're working through as well. And so as Gil alluded to, we're leaning on consultant project managers to help our existing staff keep the train moving on this one.
I'll leave it at that for now. Obviously, this is questions, but I think it's an overall concern, certainly for me. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions right now regarding this public or this, the CIP? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the public, and, you know, then I will take comments or even more questions. So are there public comments as I open up the public hearing for our proposed five-year, five-year capital improvement program? Anyone in chambers? Okay, how about, oh, come on down, Scott.
So what it sounds like is most of the projects we've done are within Public Works, with the Public Work employees. I'm asking, I don't know if you can answer that, but can we sub out to private sectors a lot of the work competitively bidding and see what those prices come back at?
Yeah. Okay, I can answer that, or someone else can answer that in a minute. But any good question, other questions or comments at this point? Okay, are there any on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, and I could have Director Lee, if you could answer that question, which I assume the answer is, we're obviously going to be doing some bidding, going out for RFPs for...
Yes, so we routinely supplement staff resources with private consulting firms on contract for a variety of reasons. One of those is when we just have projects and we don't have positions filled. Other times, we need some specialized expertise, or it's just more than staff can handle, even when we are fully staffed. So we definitely look at that.
Great, thank you. And that also speaks a little bit to Councilmember Lesser's valid concern. I think, I'll make this one comment. It is a proposed five-year improvement program, you know, and our needs could change from year to year, and priorities could change, and we always have that option to say, you know, it's not, you would stop a project that's already, you know, in process, but you could say, we need to move this up and make that happen. And it's also dependent on it being funded. You know, right now, you know, you work on the ones that are funded. So are there, you know, before I look to someone to make a motion, are there questions, comments? Councilmember Shirleyan.
We need to close.
Oh, close. I officially closed public comments. Thought I had, but thank you for, never hurts to double close. All right, Councilmember Shirleyan.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation, Gil. Yeah, I, and I'm gonna sound like I'm repeating kind of the sentiments of the mayor, mayor pro tem, and I do have concerns about getting the, just the fiscal year '26, the $6.2 million that we have, I'm not even looking at it as, I'm looking at it as a five-year, but just as a, you know, looking at it as a one-year plan, because you have another $5.5 million carry forward from the previous year. So it makes 2026 a little bit more difficult. So I guess I would have liked to see some type of implementation plan or priority of how things were, you know, what projects were gonna happen first. I also have a, you know, real concern about our aging facilities. I was looking at a report we did years back, and, you know, Manhattan Beach Heights is 1968, Jocelyn is 64, Scout House is 50, Bag is 1940. How far, you know, how far are we gonna kick the can down the road? I really think we need to have a priority plan for our aging facilities to be able to have a plan so we can get there at some point in the near future. But these are old buildings. This is a, you know, beautiful town we live in, and I think, you know, we should have facilities and buildings that, you know, accommodate our own town. Also have a real big concern about, you know, I brought up the state pier railings, and I appreciate you putting it on here for fiscal year 2028, but I'd really like to see that moved up. Not sure how you would be able to accommodate that. It's just, again, one person's opinion, but we have the blueprint, we know what the colors... We know what the colors are. You know, we have some big things happen in the next three years. You know, we have the funding. Maybe we could look at the Public Art Trust Fund. We just increased the state pier parking meters. That one year's worth of revenue increase should cover that cost. So I'd really like some feedback as to, you know, what the thoughts are on this being fiscal year 2028 and maybe not being up until 2029 or '30. This is, again, this is our Statue of Liberty and our pier, and those upper pier lot railings need to be updated. That's all I have for now.
Okay, we can talk about that as a council in general. But Councilmember Franklin.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So you saw that there were many times that we've met, you know, to discuss the CIP. I remember, you know, before I got on council, CIP was, okay, sort of this nefarious thing in the cloud, you know, as far as, there was a lot of big projects, a lot of big dollar signs, dollar amounts passed about. And it gets a little discouraging, too, when we have these meetings and they aren't very well attended by the public. And yet, when we're out walking about, we hear, oh, we need to replace this, and, oh, we need to replace that. So it's really a roadmap for as we bring money from the general fund and pass it on to the CIP. But we really need your help in establishing those priorities. I mean, we can look at it if something is crumbling. You know, we can go ahead and, you know, get that priority established. But I, for one, would like to see more public participation. It'd be great if someone can come in and write a check for $188 million.
Wouldn't it?
But even if they did, in our fantasy, it's still because we're constricted, you know, we're restricted with the talent to implement all this. So we really do need your help with prioritizing and maybe write a check every now and then. But it is your money. It is your city. And we really want to make sure that we do the best job for you.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I mean, I want to, I think you mentioned roadmap, and I would echo that. One of the things, I mean, I think facilities are, we needed new facilities since, what? What is it, 2011, when the Facility Strategic Master Plan?
Maybe even before then.
Well, FSP started, I was on, no, you're right. It wasn't 2011. No, it was 2004 when that committee started, and I was on, anyway. So, and to do facilities, major facilities, I think you're looking at bonds in most part, except we have this wonderful private-public partnership. I mean, there's lots of ways to do this. The thing that can get lost when we only, and I'm not saying you're saying this, by the way, rely on public prioritization, we forget things like sewers. We forget things like the stuff that is really not sexy, right? But has to be done. And if it wasn't for Eric and Gil and all the public works directors that we have worked for, right, Juan and Jim and all those guys saying, listen, all this is great, but if you don't have, if those toilets don't flush and the sewers get backed up, you know, then you're in real, you know, deep trouble. So, you know, so I, that's kind of the reason why I'm not pushing to maybe jump on the bandwagon with the upper pier lot railings, although I think that's a, I'm saying, let's, there's a lot for them to focus on. We're talking about it's going to be hard for them to accomplish what this is doing. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying maybe we should move priorities around because let's not forget, we are also going to be embarking on a major facility project with parking one way or the other very soon, which isn't really even part of what we're approving. So that's where I'm looking. So I think we're all kind of saying the same things. We have a lot of needs. We don't probably have enough engineers and amazing people to do it all. But we get federal and state grants. We get county, you know, county grants or taxes, you know, whether it's Measure W, whether it's, you know, all these different measures. And we're going to keep looking for more funding and more people. And we got to keep pushing. I'd love to, you know, address all our facility needs and maybe we need to, in the near future, convene some strategic facility planning facilities, a new facilities assessment. Maybe we need to do that. But for now, I'd be willing to accept this five-year capital improvement program. Councilmember Lesser.
I'm supportive of accepting the plan as well. I want to compliment staff on the work that they've done in leading up to this discussion tonight. There are limited dollars to pay for whatever number of needs that we have, particularly on our aging infrastructure, as was pointed out by Councilmember Sherrillian. The reason for my earlier question about staff resources is because all of us have seen over the years where we have approved capital improvement plans, but we don't have the resources to implement them. And it goes on year after year where we don't have people and we don't have the resources to engage outside contractors. And I think we need to be vigilant in paying attention to that. So with that, I'll simply say I appreciate the prioritization that has been done by staff at the direction of council. Thank you for the updates, and I'm supportive of the moving forward.
Councilmember Tornay.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you staff for this thorough report. And I know it's been a really long process that you've all undergone and that to get to this point, there have been lots of hurdles that you've all had to jump over, prioritizing finding the funding and helping us, guide us through this process. So I am supportive. And I do think, to echo what my colleague Sherrillian said is, I do think as we're implementing these things, as we approach it, to continue to look forward and look for funding options. We have a beautiful city that you're all doing a great job maintaining, and we want to make sure that it stays that way. But I agree, we have some massive projects that we are undertaking in the next three to five years. So thank you, I appreciate it.
And, you know, we can continue to, you know, we adopt the plan, but we could continue to tweak it and continue, you know, be vigilant, like you said. I think that's a really great point. So without any further comments, let's go to the call to question.
Motion process, 5-0.
And thank you, staff, as all the colleagues said. That is a heavy lift. Okay, so item, are we good? Are my colleagues good? Do you need a little, all right, we're good. All right. The hardest-working council in the show business. Here we go. Item number 16, Conduct Public Hearing in Consideration of Resolutions, Adopting the Fiscal Year 2026 Operating Budget and Again Appropriations Limit. Acting Finance Director, Ms. Brett Hauer.
All right, good evening. I'm Libby Brett Hauer, Acting Finance Director, and I am pleased to present tonight's public hearing item regarding the fiscal year '26 budget. This is the fourth opportunity for the City Council and community members to discuss the fiscal year '26 budget. And the budget was first presented on May 6. And on May 13, we brought back some follow-up items that were requested by the City Council and then took a deeper dive into the operating budgets of each department. And then on May 20, we returned to City Council with more follow-up items again and sought questions and direction in advance of tonight's public hearing. So changes to the proposed budget are identified in what's titled Exhibit A of the Budget Adoption Resolution. And attached to your staff report is the budget resolution, a second resolution that establishes our GAN appropriations limit, a web link to the proposed budget documents, and then a list of proposed and deferred budget enhancements that are, that were included in the document, and financial policies that were requested by the City Council at the last meeting. So to recap our fiscal outlook, as we've discussed during our previous budget discussions, our current spending plan supports City Council priorities and the results of our community survey taken earlier this year. So our revenues are stable in key areas and bolstered by Measure MMB funds that was approved by voters in November of 2024. We do have some budget challenges on the horizon such as pension liabilities and insurance costs. And we've also discussed greater economic uncertainty resulting from tariffs and other inflationary pressures. But I just want to reiterate that staff is taking these concerns seriously and will continue to look for ways to minimize our costs wherever we can. Later in the presentation, I'll be sharing some efforts currently underway regarding replacement of our public safety radio equipment. So the proposed budget did include placeholder MOU adjustments in line with the MOUs that were approved tonight. The proposed budget did not include any new full-time positions. However, it did include some position upgrades and downgrades for existing positions to align these roles with current organizational needs. And so these items, as well as items on the following two slides, were presented in detail during the May 13 budget study session. And, you know, staff from each department went through these items and answered questions and took comments from the City Council and members of the public. So I won't go through all of them here since I felt like we kind of went through them in detail previously. But staff is here in all departments or from all departments to answer any further questions that you may have. So just moving on, so we did include some follow-up items from questions that were provided on May 20. And I won't read through these seven items here on the slide because subsequent slides will go into more details. So staff did receive a question regarding peg fees during one of the meetings. So these funds are paid to the city by two providers, Charter Frontier. Expenditures in the last year did draw down both fund balances. And as you can see, revenues are on the decline as suspected, likely due to those cutting the cord, such as Councilmember Franklin mentioned. Again, staff's here to answer any further questions, but we're just kind of providing some follow-up information here tonight. So item two, we wanted to highlight, again, the budget repartization of some line items that staff did proactively to eliminate some things that were no longer as necessary and make room for higher-level priorities. So the $404,000 that, in the general fund, equates to, or when you're comparing it to all of the, what we call controllable costs that departments are responsible for, the $404,000 equates to 1.4%. So there were other items that were considered for budgetary savings. However, those were not included in the proposed budget because at this time, we have not received direction to make service delivery reductions. So these were the items that we could eliminate from the budget while maintaining current service levels. This list here includes some other department requests that were considered but deferred to future years due to budget constraints. So here, I'd like to take the opportunity to note a more recent development regarding public safety radios that did not make it into the staff report tonight due to agenda posting deadlines. So the, some background, the police and fire departments conducted a review of their current radio inventory and determined a large portion are near the end of their useful life and not at the recommended level of interoperability with other public safety agencies. As part of this review, staff identified there is newer technology available that offers a higher level of security and greater interoperability that will be critical during upcoming major regional events like the World Cup, Super Bowl, and Olympics in 2028. So with this information, staff had been corresponding with Motorola to look at pricing. And then they surprised us with an email recently about new tariff pricing that would be coming soon if we did not agree to a contract in June. So we immediately started looking at financing options. And with the bond issuance that we're currently working on for 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, it does currently look like it'll be more efficient to include certificates of participation for the radios with the deal that's already scheduled to close in August. And we can take advantage of some savings there to do it all wrapped into one deal. So that's just a highlight or overview of what we're working on. So I didn't want anyone to be surprised two weeks from now, on June 17, when the item comes before you. But it does seem like it's moving faster than we expected because our goal would be to take advantage of the pre-tariff pricing and try to minimize our borrowing costs however we can.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to interrupt. Is that for both fire and police department?
Yes, it would be.
Great, okay.
And then additionally, we'd like to be discussing over the coming months how we could start building a reserve for public safety replacement or equipment replacements instead of having to finance purchases like this in the future.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're interrupting your presentation.
It's okay.
But just because we are talking about adopting a budget first, which would include amounts prospectively in this COP for the radios, what amount are we talking about roughly? You know, the item is forthcoming.
So the documents tonight did not include funding for the radios. I literally just got the information this afternoon. So that's why we'll be bringing it back to City Council on June 17.
It'll be about $4.7 million. Okay.
Okay. So if there are no further questions on that item, we'll move on to the third item for follow-up, which we just wanted to include this slide since there was some discussion during the last meeting on Measure MMB. So as a general tax measure, the revenues are placed in the general fund. And as the ballot language notes, there were uses for the funds mentioned that are general fund activities like filling potholes, maintaining parks. And then other items that were noted were more capital improvements. So we just wanted to provide this background on Measure MMB funds that are included in the proposed budget. And again, we are expecting about $5.9 million next fiscal year. So, and then City Council has the discretion to transfer funds to the CIP Fund for capital projects as you see fit. So with Measure MMB funds now coming into the general fund and giving us some opportunity there to fund some additional infrastructure projects, it gave us the opportunity to take a look at our financial policies and how we were directing funds to the CIP Fund. So this, you've seen this slide before. We shared it at a previous meeting. But previously, the CIP Fund received funding from parking citations and parking meter revenues. So these allocations resulted in additional staff time to ensure funds were distributed correctly. Monthly journal entries were required to split the parking meter revenues, just for example. So with Measure MMB funds going into the general fund, we took the opportunity to keep all parking citation revenues in the general fund and all parking meter revenues in the parking fund. And with the Lot 3 replacement and now, you know, potential opportunity site at 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, the parking fund certainly needs additional revenues as well. And so I can move on from this slide. So other financial policy changes are identified on this slide. At the last meeting, City Council requested a red-line version of the policies. So that was included in the packet. So the financial policies document is always included in the city budget document. And the version that's included in the proposed budget reflects changes that are included in the red-line version. So there were some minor grammar edits and updates. Then other changes included the, our audit and our act for presentation timeline to better accommodate agenda packet posting timelines. The CIP funding decisions that were noted on the previous slide, those were also included in the financial policies. We also sought to increase our capital asset thresholds to align these limits with other cities and bring some efficiencies to our year-end accounting processes. And the last, I'd say, significant item was a change to our budget monitoring reports that we've been presenting monthly. But our goal is to present those quarterly and really add more content and narrative to them instead of just monthly reports that are just numbers[1768.41] add more content and narrative to them instead of just monthly reports that are just numbers, but without narrative to it. And so happy to answer any questions on those items. So the agenda packet also included our unfunded liability pension policy that was approved by city council in 2021. So I, we, the finance committee also reviewed that, but I wasn't planning on going into detail on that tonight because I wanted to bring it back in the fall, once we bring back a larger pension update. But we did include it tonight. But it's, just for everyone's understanding, it's not included within the budget document like the other financial policies document is. But on the topic of pension funding, I just wanted to note a few things. This slide was included previously, but just to recap some of what we already discussed. In addition to current service costs and pension obligation bond debt, debt service payments, the city again has unfunded liabilities due to CalPERS investment returns that fell below the assumed rate of return in fiscal year 22 and 23. So the proposed budget does include $2 million for unfunded liability payments, and those are allocated out to departmental programs based on current services. So the pension obligation bonds we issued in 2021 were not meant to solve our pension funding issues forever, but it did buy us some time and flexibility. So this slide is new, but you will continue seeing it going forward on a regular cycle. So as of our most recent CalPERS valuation reports, our new unfunded liability totals about $36 million. The payoff period according to our policy is between 17 to 20 years, and our payments for fiscal year 26 total $2 million over various funds. So funding CalPERS liabilities will be challenging as those payments increase, which is why we'll be bringing more regular updates to city council in the future. So the next time you'll see this slide will be in the fall with our quarterly budget report. So at that time, we will have received an updated, or updated CalPERS actuarial valuation reports in August. So we'll be updating these numbers and, you know, provide it for discussion in the fall. And then we'll be able to, you know, we'll bring that slide back around during the budget discussions next spring as well. So plan on bringing it at least twice a year to keep everyone apprised of the latest numbers. So the pension policy adopted with, in 2021, does allow flexibility in how we allocate the savings that was derived from issuing the pension obligation bond. So again, we kind of traded the debt we owed to CalPERS for level debt service payments with the bond issuance. And then the, the thinking was that we would allocate that savings to either our Section 115 trust fund for future pension liabilities, or we could allocate some to CIP funding, which we have done over the last few years. So over the last four years, we allocated 5.3 million to the CIP fund and put 3.4 million to the Section 115 trust for future pension costs. So I just wanted to note that because again, the, the issuing the pension obligation bonds did give us some flexibility, and then the city council was able to allocate that savings to the IP fund and reserves as decided each year during the budget process. But the fiscal year 26 budget does allocate all of the savings to the Section 115 trust. So if there are no questions on that topic, we can move on to the next slide. We've already just discussed the capital improvement plan and mentioned the parking and pier funds, but we wanted to include this slide since these questions kept coming up, and we just wanted to provide some further clarification on the city's three funds that we have dedicated to parking. So the parking fund, which is the kind of teal color on the slide, is used to account for revenue generated by and for operations and maintenance of city parking lots and street parking meters. So as of May 1st, all of these parking meters on the city streets and lots increased to $2.50 per hour. Now, the beach lots were all increased to $3.50 per hour. So those would be the, the dark blue and the orange-ish color. So El Porto and Bruce's Beach revenues go into what we call the county parking lots fund, which is kept separate for the operation and maintenance of these county parking lots. So that, those lots are owned by the county but leased to the city. Proceeds from the meters and parking permits are divided 55% to the county and 45% to the city. And like, just as a note too, the county lots agreement does state that revenues should be used to support public beach recreation facilities and programs. So revenues from the four pier lots also go into a separate fund called the state pier and parking lot fund. So this fund is used for the operation and maintenance of the Manhattan Beach Pier, the Comfort Station, and the four adjacent parking lots. So these properties are owned by the state but controlled by the city through an operating agreement. So again, this, this slide is purely informational for some context before future agenda items might discuss parking revenues and infrastructure projects in the coming months.
Just, just a quick question. So the dollar amounts here, that's the city share of that revenue, or is it the gross revenue?
Those would be our revenues going into each fund, yes.
For, for the city.
So that would be the total revenue going into the fund, but you are correct that if, if you're looking at the county lots, then expenditure to the county for that 55% would be deducted from this. Okay, moving back towards the budget modifications for fiscal year 26. So this slide was just to reference the understanding of the capital improvement plan changes that were just approved with the CIP. So we are also reflecting those in the budget adoption resolution in what we call Exhibit A. And then this slide includes some other budget changes that staff identified over the last several weeks. So the first item is the marine mammal care that was discussed last city council meeting, the $50,000 allocation. The next item is CalRecycle grant that was, actually, you approved it on consent earlier tonight, $20,980. But I should note, we realized shortly before the meeting, the, the grant dollar amount actually should, on our slide and document is incorrect, so we would like to include a modification that it should be $20,890 rather than $980.
Uh oh, we have dyslexia.
Apologize for the typo, but in case anyone else noticed that discrepancy, we wanted to clarify. And then in the street lighting landscape fund, again, a very minor change. We just wanted the adopted budget to reflect what's on the assessment engineer's report, so a very minor change there. Some good news on our gas tax fund revenues. We always get state estimates in January, and then when the governor puts out a, you know, budget revision, they reflect, or new gas tax revenues are reflected at that time, and so ours will be increasing by about 45,000. So we would like to update the adopted budget with that amount. And then lastly, just again, the CIP changes that you adopted in the previous item. So with these modifications to the proposed budget, total expenditures for fiscal year 26 are about $105.6 million, and revised revenues for fiscal year 26 are $125.4 million. And taking into account all revenues, expenditures, and fund transfers, the projected year-end fund balance is anticipated to be $30.1 million in the general fund. And this does reflect the anticipated bond proceeds that we expect in August of about $13.2 million. In addition to the general fund reserves, just as a reminder, the pension Section 115 trust fund balance is projected to be $6 million at year end. So to wrap up, general fund revenues are anticipated to exceed expenditures by $19.8 million, again, due to the $13.2 million in anticipated bond proceeds for 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Excluding these one-time bond proceeds, the general fund surplus is about $6.6 million due to the measure MMB local transactions and used tax funds. Overall, we expect our diversified revenue sources will continue to carry our general fund programs, maintain our essential services, while also allowing for reinvestment in our infrastructure, maintenance, and service levels. So this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives from all departments if you have any other specific questions related to their budget items. If none, we recommend conducting the public hearing, which was properly noticed in the beach reporter. And then we request that you adopt Resolution Number 2574, adopting the fiscal year 26 operating budget as proposed and amended in Exhibit A, and Resolution 2575 establishing the GAN appropriations limit for fiscal year 26. And we're happy to take any questions.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you for that report and for taking into consideration different suggestions and direction we have given you. Okay, colleagues, questions for, before I open it up, the public hearing? Councilmember Shreelian.
Thanks, Lemmy. Well done on the report. The $404,000 you indicated that was cut from the general fund was how many, what percentage of the general fund? You said it was over.
If you look at the total general fund, it is less than 1%, but if you're looking at controllable costs, so not including debt service or personnel costs, so just comparing the controllable costs that departments are responsible for, I believe it was 1.4%.
What was it, what is that number, the controllable cost? What was the total controllable cost for the city?
If you can give me one moment, I can get that.
No, no, go ahead.
Is that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, any other questions? Because I can open it up for a public hearing, and then we can discuss.
I can't answer the council member's question now. That number was $28,350 some.
Gotcha. Only reason I ask that question is because in the staff report, it indicates that the general fund and not just the controllable, so it was a little confusing to.
Oh, here a different number, understood, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so I would like to open up the public hearing. And that, that is what I'm doing. I'm conducting a public hearing for item number 16, our fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Is there anybody from the public who is here in chambers that would like to comment on the budget?
Former Councilman Reverend Montgomery.
Stop, he's on the 405. Okay. Okay. How about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
All right, I'm going to close public comments and open it up to my colleagues. Okay, anybody, anybody? Go ahead, Councilmember Franklin.
Okay. So a couple of items I'd like to have us all kind of think about is, there was, sorry, a lot of paper here.
No kidding.
There was a request to, to increase funding for an assistant city manager, and that would be by upgrading the now vacant position of assistant to the city manager. And I just kind of feel that we went through, you know, a very extensive and effective vetting process. I think that it really doesn't warrant, given the selection we made, to add that additional overhead to the management services department in the form of an assistant city manager. So I just wanted to bring that up and make that recommendation.
Okay. Is there discussion from my colleagues regarding this, from other colleagues? Councilmember Lesser?
I concur with Councilmember Franklin, but let me approach it this way. First of all, I want to compliment our city manager and the role she is playing in managing and administrating our city. I think she's done a phenomenal job, and compliment her and recognize that she's doing so with limited staffing. I think public doesn't even know that we're down a significant staff member in that office. There used to be an assistant at the city manager. That position's been vacant for some months, and we have, what is now being proposed, I think, $196 million budget. Granted, we have departments and senior staff in each of those departments to administer these budgets, but there has to be an overall management role. I appreciate the role she's playing. I just cannot support an assistant city manager position at this time. I can support a deputy city manager to give more resources to that role. But my thought is twofold. One, we've had an assistant city manager in the past, and I'm concerned by the structure that that presented for our smaller city. It's important to have a single person in charge that would not change with an assistant city manager, but the proposal, as was presented to this council for this position, would again be an administrator who'd be responsible for day-to-day operations for certain departments, freeing up capacity for policy initiatives, which this council is not shy about throwing the way of our city manager, as well as unexpected issues like our parking lot three. Think of all the steps that were required to address it as an emergency, to be able to get RFPs out there, to follow the process, to get an emergency, urgency ordinance in process with the help of our city attorney and our public works department. All of that requires staffing resources. I still want to have a single city manager responsible for administering our city. Then there's also the times that we're living in. There is enormous financial uncertainty on the horizon. Our city's resources and revenue streams are strong. This is a responsible budget, but I think our message to our community, let alone in fact, has to be that we are cautious. We are uncertain what the world holds going on with the tariffs, with the budget negotiations nationally. They all trickle down and impact us. And as a result, I think at this time, I would not be supportive of an assistant city manager. I would be supportive of the deputy city manager. We can reevaluate this position. We can reevaluate the difference in salary going forward, but that would be my position.
Okay, thank you, council member, or I'm sorry, mayor pro temp. Councilmember Ternay.
Thank you very much. So I've given this, this item a lot of thought, and I've looked through the reports and the comparison of what is expected for, in the duties that our city managers performing and what other cities, like cities, have in their structure. I think with the projects that we have coming up, I'm, I'm concerned about the massive, we have infrastructure work that's going to be coming down the pipeline. We have major events that are coming to town over the next three years, which I'm super excited about, but I think that requires management and it requires, and some, you know, I've thought about whether, and I understand being fiscally responsible, but I also think it's an opportunity for us to use these resources to help find additional funding. So even though we're expending more money, I don't necessarily see it as, as just expending money, but also potentially freeing up space and freeing up capacity so that staff and our city manager, and if we appoint an assistant city manager, can find funding sources to support the programs, the infrastructure work that we have going on, and the events that are going to be coming into town. So for those reasons, and I think like cities that are similarly structured like our, similar demographics, and we are not low-maintenance cities, our, our residents really demand results, our businesses demand results, and so I think having somebody who can be responsive and dividing up that work, and, and, you know, I would be open to considering it just for a limited period of time, if that's possible, but just to carry, carry us through the next three years at a minimum, I would be supportive.
Okay. Councilmember Shreelian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too like the idea of a higher-level deputy. I, I do have concerns about the structure of having a city manager over a few departments and an assistant city manager over other departments. I think that it's just different leadership styles, and something gets lost in translation. I think it's a different time. I think, you know, I would like to see it upgraded to a deputy. And then, but a higher-level deputy, meaning let's get, let's get some money behind it and get the right number, and then, you know, we can revisit it at, at some point. But at this point in time, I do support a deputy, whatever funding is appropriate outside of the $130,000 for an assistant city manager. But times are changed, they're different. I think we can work ourselves up to that, but it has to be the right. I think we can work ourselves up to that, but it has to be the right structure. There has to be just one city manager over the departments and maybe the assistant city manager does, at some point in the future, would do something operationally. But right now, this structure, I don't like it and I'd like to see a higher-level deputy.
Okay. Wow, I think there's a lot of good comments. By the way, I mean, it's not like I'm ever going to say, oh, there's some bad comments up here tonight. But honestly, I appreciate the discussion.
What are you really saying about some of our comments, really?
Just saying. No, but I think, as always, I think we have really good discussions as a council. And like councilmember Ternay, I have been supportive of the position. And I have been comfortable, and I was comfortable with a structure that was proposed because, and I want to set up our city managers to succeed. And I'm not saying you guys don't, so let me, hear me out, because I'm having lots of thoughts here. You know, when I was on the school board and early on, I liked to give the top folks the tools and the support they feel they need to succeed. That's why I hired them. I know when I was considering, you know, as a council member, as an individual, who we were hiring for this position, I was looking to see what they would tell us we needed and what, you know, in order to go to that next level, which I appreciate both of you saying with different solutions, right? Like, times have, are different and we do have big projects coming up. You know, like the parking, you know, I really want us to figure out what the pulse of Manhattan Beach is going to be sooner than later. You know, it is true that you could say high maintenance or you could say well-educated, engaged, demanding residents and businesses, right? I think, you know, we have to be careful that, like, look at what has just happened recently. Like, you have what happened on Sepulveda. Like, that then becomes a whole thing, right? That becomes a whole project. That becomes a whole thing. You have, we keep adding more, right? Having said all that, I think where the votes, you know, are coming out with really good comments might be to go to a high-level, some sort of deputy city manager that is not just an assistant to, that is somebody who will have some agency and can tackle some projects and do, you know, project-based things, freeing up the city manager's time to manage department heads. And let's see how that works. Let's see if that helps alleviate, you know, some of the strain that, not strain, because I don't think our city manager is saying she can't do the work. And I know she's not saying that. I think she's saying, listen, if you guys, you know, we want to keep doing incredibly, you know, over 110%, but let's see if that high-level deputy city manager can't really add value. Let's be open to, if we're open to reevaluating that. Because the last point I'll make is I know one of the things that I really want to see whomever was in this position do is to really work closely with all the department heads on evaluations, their own and their departments, right? That's something that we wanted. In terms of making sure our employees were all providing exceptional service, professionalism at the highest level, it requires high-level management, right? So that's, but I am one person, so I just want to put that out there, that that is something, a goal that I still want to see happen. But I'm willing, I think, I think there's a lot of wisdom in looking at a department, department, deputy city manager, to try to get us, you know, see if that is adding the value. I'd be in favor of that. Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Mayor Protem Lesser to describe a deputy city manager, you know, include salary and.
I brought with me, or I thought I brought with me.
Oh, I thought you were joking.
Description that was in the staff report from, was it the May?
May 13th.
13th document, and of course, I can't find it here.
You need a deputy.
Rather than misstated, is there a definition that I'll turn to the city manager to describe?
Sure, thank you for the question, councilmember Franklin. So in most municipal organizations, that position is placed slightly below the department head level. While deputy city managers may manage special projects or oversee key functions such as communication or economic development, they typically do not possess formal supervisory authority over departments or executive staff. And the price range at a lower level is typically around a $95,000 increase from the assistant to position.
Okay.
So the difference between, sorry, let me put it a different way. The difference between the assistant city manager and the deputy is about $30,000.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? The difference between?
The salary. If we changed it to a deputy city manager, based on the estimates we provided on May 13th, it would reduce overall general fund expenditures by about $27,500.
From the $129?
Yes, yes.
So it would be.
So the increase to upgrade the assistant to the city manager position to a deputy is about $95,900 compared to the $129.
So $100,000.
Now, $139 to 95, is that?
No, it's, well, right now it's $130.
Is it $130?
$130 rounding up a little bit.
Yes, well, so the, actually, do you mind if we put the PowerPoint back up? Maybe that'll be helpful.
We need to see numbers.
Yes.
We're getting all, we're all saying different things.
Yes.
It's like a $30,000 difference.
It is, so. Okay, I think the other discrepancy is the upgrading the assistant to the city manager position to an assistant city manager is, would be about $129,000. However, the second line below that, number seven, to, you know, help reduce costs and align all of the positions to current needs, would be down, the idea would be to downgrade the policy and management analyst to a senior management analyst, which would yield a savings of about $6,300. So when you add, you know, those, then, you know, so taking that downgrade into account as well, you know, so downgrading.
That's not what, they're trying to figure out the difference in price between assistant city manager and deputy, not the difference in savings to the department.
Okay.
I mean.
So then that's about $30,000.
Yeah.
So it's $30,000 above the existing salary of the assistant to the city manager?
No, the increase would be $30,000 less.
So the.
So the.
Okay. So there's the difference of $100,000 you were talking about.
So compared to the current position, to upgrade it to a deputy city manager, would be about $95,000.
Okay.
On top of the assistant to the city manager job is X amount plus a $95,000. So it's not, deputy city manager's salary is not 95,000. It's a $95,000 increase.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, from the assistant to the city manager.
Yes.
Yes.
And the other one's $129,000.
And that assistant to the city manager position has been vacant for?
Since the end of December.
End of December.
Since the trader went to Pelas for his.
To become an assistant city manager.
To become an assistant city manager, great point.
Thought he became a deputy.
He's a deputy.
He became a deputy.
He became a deputy.
Yeah.
Thank you for the correction.
Okay, that was just for clarification, so. And the responsibilities, I think you said, is, was below a departmental level.
A deputy, correct me if I'm wrong, a deputy city manager would not be above department heads. So they would not direct the IT director.
Correct.
Right, okay. And so, I mean, we had a person in that position. How would that job change? I mean, they were in management services.
We do not have that position currently.
No, but we had it.
We've never had that position.
No, a assistant to the city manager, we had that position.
We had that position, that is correct.
And so I'm trying to reconcile the $100,000 increase.
They do a lot more.
To get a, well, but that's what I'm trying to find out what.
The type of work is different. So you're really overseeing project management and some of those projects could be internal projects, but then also could be external-facing projects. So take Love MB, for example. That would be somewhat, something that that person could take off my plate that, I'm just using this as an example, that I would no longer be a part of. Or, not that I wouldn't be a part of it, but I wouldn't be in the day-to-day meetings related to that. Or Project Pulse or 400 MBE. So some of these projects, and we have a lot of that going on, the Olympics as well, some of that could be offloaded to this individual.
All right, well, I'll let someone else talk, so.
Councilmember Shrelian.
Thank you, Mayor. Talene, so would this person, the deputy, would they, when you're away from the office, would they be the acting city manager?
I haven't thought that far through yet. Typically, they don't oversee department heads, so that creates a little bit of an issue there.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is I'm just not seeing very much difference between the assistant to and the deputy is what I'm getting feedback. Outside of the title and the higher salary range, the previous assistant to managed some really big programs for the city, homelessness and other things, a hu, large program. So I guess, you know, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing here with the deputy, in the sense of, they're not going to be acting city manager. They're not going to be supervising anybody. They're going to be managing programs. And that's what the previous assistant to was managing potentially.
Well, this is a higher-level employee. I would describe it as that. Assistant to typically is more administrative level and I can ask the HR director to correct me if I'm wrong. But deputies typically come in with higher experience, a lot more experienced with project management particularly.
Got it, thank you.
That's great, great question. I mean, I would be willing, I don't know if.
Madam?
Yes.
Can we hear from the HR director just to describe?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, council. So typically, an assistant to the city manager, think of it as akin to a senior management analyst within an operating department, but it's a specialized title for a position that supports the city manager. So the work is more analytical and administrative in nature. A deputy city manager can take on different roles within different cities. Often, they oversee high-level functions or programs, divisions for an organization, but not necessarily entire departments. So in some cities, that looks like, you know, overseeing communications and economic development and emergency preparedness and entire functions that are important to the city, but don't necessarily have a home within a certain department. As the city manager mentioned, they can also be the lead on significant projects requiring a lot of cross-departmental collaboration and really bridging that gap between departments. In terms of the work that was assigned to the prior assistant to the city manager, something like the homeless services initiative. Although there are multiple departments that are involved with the city's response, it's not a project or a program that really has a, like, team of employees working on it like the projects that the city manager mentioned. So it's really high-level coordination among departments. I do think in some jurisdictions, a deputy city manager could oversee department heads, but what you see more often is the deputy city manager either being at the level of department heads, like the same salary level, or sometimes it's even a lower level than department heads. And that all just depends on how the particular city has chosen to structure the position and assign responsibilities.
Okay, so I'll follow up a little bit. So one difference could be that the deputy city manager position doesn't necessarily oversee department heads, but they could oversee teams of employees, right?
Correct. Typically, a deputy city manager would oversee other staff within the management services or city manager's office. And sometimes, you know, depending on the city, some cities have multiple deputy city managers overseeing different functions.
Okay, shush, 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 no, 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 multiple. What I'm getting at, what I'm getting at was, sorry, I just shushed up, but you should know what I meant. What I'm getting at is like, so you mentioned economic development activities, right? So that could involve folks in comm dev. It could involve public works. It could also involve management services, right? Because like, if you're talking about pulse and parking, you want somebody with more experience than, say, just an assistant to the city manager. Because you want somebody who's had experience across different departments, working in something like this.
Correct, and the other thing that I should have mentioned but failed to was that it also involves significant projects, significant input from stakeholders within the community. So I know it was mentioned tonight, you know, the expectations of our business community, the expectations of our residents. And I think the type of things that you would see a deputy city manager typically assigned to are things that involve a lot of coordination between staff, but also potentially a lot of coordination with our external partners. So that could be the school district. It could be the downtown business association. It could be the chamber. So it is like a high-level management position, but not necessarily overseeing a department.
But it could, and I'm sorry, councilmember Shrelian, or could it, I should say? Could it, they, let's say, and this is not true, so where's Miguel? Is Miguel here? No, Tatiana's here. This is not true.
He's always watching.
He's always watching. But like, let's say, and again, this is why, it's not true, but like, if there is a department that we want to say, hey, you know, work with this department to develop a different type of interface, blah, blah, blah. So they're not directing the director, but they're managing that whole project, you know, whether it's comm dev to, you know, improve permitting or whatever. They could oversee that kind of thing. So it's not that they're going to be doing a job evaluation for comm dev director, but they're going to work with them to keep that process going. Could that be an appropriate role?
Correct, and in some.
That's bigger than assistant to city manager. I'm trying to figure it out.
Yeah, and in some cities, like a deputy city manager, depending on their structure, not all cities have a director over IT or, you know, HR or something like that. A smaller city, sometimes that deputy city manager does take on the role of overseeing certain departments. Typically, in smaller cities, typically in bigger cities, it would be more of like a program function, like I mentioned, economic development or other community-facing functions.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, and I, my colleagues.
No, with your questions, Mayor and Director Jenkins' answers, I think, you know, the deputy makes sense and, you know, I like the higher level. I like the opportunity for the deputy to, you know, manage or whether it's somebody in management services or, you know, I like what you were saying about projects, but I'd like to get some of the employees off the city manager's plate.
Right, that's the whole point.
That's the whole point. So I'd like to see that, you know, on a memorial, you know, in the minutes that like, we are looking for someone to offload some of the city. So thank you for your answers and questions. I'm done.
And questions, and one, and one thing before you. Would that type of position, could you, could that help alleviate some of the?
Yes, that would definitely help to current situation.
Okay, Councilwoman Ternay.
Oh, thank you. I just have a quick question. So the difference, just to make sure I have the numbers correctly, because I'm not the numbers scout. Steve is the numbers guy over there, right? But so the difference between the deputy city manager position and the assistant city manager position is 34. city manager position is $34,000? Okay, $30,000?
Approximately.
Approximately, okay. I mean, I think, from my perspective, in order to get the higher-level autonomy, I think that, that $34,000 would justify that kind of move for me personally, but I'm hearing what you all have to say, I would support a deputy city manager position in lieu of...
And I still agree with you too, but I do feel that I, I really appreciate and that support my, our colleagues' line of, you know, reasoning there. Councilmember Franklin, then I'm gonna...
Yeah.
Ask for direction on...
Sure, but I just want to make a comment, that it is $100,000 more than the assistant to the city manager. It may be $30,000 less, right?
That's what, yeah, that's what the budget represents.
Than, than a assistant city manager, but it's $100,000 less than what we have on the books now.
More, more.
$100,000 more.
Which is reflected in the budget, right.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'd like to propose, it seems like we're, want to go the deputy city manager route, but I, I think that's just too big of a jump. I mean, without, you know, direct reports coming to them, so I'd like to, I'll just put a number out there, $50,000 more than the assistant to the city manager.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know if that's, I see our colleague, Councilmember Lesser, I, I, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just get clarification? So what would that be? What is assistant to the city manager being paid now and range?
So one thing to clarify is the difference is not just salary, it's also the benefits. So the deputy city manager was costed at the executive level, so it's also the change in benefits between a non-executive position and an executive position. The position was actually costed for the deputy city manager level, the same as the department heads. And that is under what we looked at when we did a labor market study, so the salary for the position that was supported by a, a study of similar positions in our market agencies actually had the position coming out at a little higher than that, even at the deputy city manager level. The problem is, if you put the salary much lower than that, then you won't be able to attract someone to the position at the appropriate level in line with the needs that the city manager has for the position.
So, I, I appreciate that, but what is the assistant to the city manager being paid now? Salary, we can talk about the benefits.
One moment, please.
Okay. Because frankly, you know, residents are concerned about salaries and the like.
I know the finance team is looking for the exact number, I believe it's around $150,000 for the assistant to the city manager. The department head's salary is closer to $230,000, so that's the difference.
So at $100,000, it would be more than a department head is making?
No, as I mentioned, the difference also includes the change in benefits, so it's different benefit levels that are assigned to an executive-level position versus a non-executive. So it's not just the salary that makes up the difference.
Okay, so...
Because the, the number, I'm sorry, just to clarify, the number of finance provides you, that's the total cost, that includes both salary and benefits.
Okay.
The cost differential, so...
It's fully burdened.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. So, I'm, I'm just trying to say, here we had an assistant to the city manager, now we're looking for a deputy city manager. What did we pay that person, and what will we pay this person? $100,000 more than this? I'm trying to figure out what that number was.
Well, and they're looking for that number, no, they gave us that number, because... So, and, and the thing is that we have the number that, in our, in the reports that affects our budget.
Right. So it's going to be about double than what an assistant to the city manager was getting?
Okay, so the top step for the assistant to the city manager is $149,600, that's the top step, so that's the maximum that we would pay someone. And then for the department heads, which is what we benchmark the position at, I believe that number is 230, 232.
But that's...
So the difference in just the top step salary is about $80,000.
Right, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Lesser, did you want to ask your question, and we can go back to...
I think we're in comments now, and I just simply wanted to acknowledge and appreciate Councilmember Franklin's seeking clarification on the amounts, because this is a budget meeting, and obviously we should be clear on what the numbers are. But I wanted to reiterate that I am in support of a deputy city manager position to provide greater capacity for our city manager. The reason why I am not in favor of an assistant city manager is, of course, the increased cost, but because of the structure, our city previously had an assistant city manager. The individual who occupied it was perfectly capable, but there were challenges with that position. There were challenges on the superficial level, where both the city manager and the assistant city manager, we had a town, so we had to have a department head serve as the acting city manager, that was the superficial issue. The more substantive issue for me as a council, and I share this to the new colleagues, is that there were instances where council did not get information that was critical for us to know. There was a gap in the information flow, in the management oversight. And granted, perhaps one could say, well, that was a bad structure then, and this would be better. But for me, I am impacted by that. I am receptive to a future assistant city manager position again, but for now, I think a deputy is the right interim step in what we need to add capacity to this department. So that's why I'm...
Okay. I want to say, thank you, I think, I think you can sit down. Is this, do we, let's get some closure on this issue, because that we have, which I want to propose a way forward, because then we also, I want to know if there's anything else about the budget, and we still have to approve the budget. So I, I am going to make a motion to approve a deputy city manager position. Where's, what's that? Oh, go ahead, or I can, you know, I, I could have, I could make comments that, I'm not going to make those comments, I'm going to stop. I, I don't want to just add capacity for, it's not just adding capacity for the city manager, it's adding services for our residents, and it's getting this work done so that we are not overrun, whether it's trash, whether it's parking lots, whether it's, you know, we, we got to do this stuff. So I am willing to try that a deputy city manager position, I think that's a step towards the right thing, and that's my proposal. And it's been seconded by Councilwoman Tarnay.
Would, would you entertain a friendly amendment to discuss the salary?
No.
And perhaps bring it down?
No. I don't, because we just heard about, no, we have to be able to attract, at that role, I mean, we don't, the, the HR director doesn't pull those numbers, you know, out of the air.
Well, but working for the city of Manhattan Beach is a pretty...
No, but we just heard this whole vacancy...
Attractive.
No, it's, it doesn't pay the rent or buy your kids groceries or send your kids to college. If you want to attract a deputy city manager, you're competing with every other city, and we saw what vacancy rates are, and that's why the salary is what it is. It's not because, oh, we want to pay all this money to someone, it's that, that's what that costs. So that's, I appreciate what you're saying, but I disagree. So I'll call for the question. Oh, David Lesser.
I just was going to echo what the mayor said. It's my understanding that in order to attract the, the person that we might want for this position that needs to have a competitive salary, and that has been studied, and that's how the number was arrived at.
Yeah, it's been, it's not just pulled out of the air, so I'd like to call for the question.
Motion passes 4-1.
But that was just a motion for that to be in the budget, so we, so are there other, anything else that somebody wants to talk about in the budget, or would anybody want to adopt resolutions?
Have questions?
Yes. Councilmember Shrelian.
Acting Director Redhauer, can you, I'm on, well, I want to talk about the 115 trust that we have, and the fact that, you know, we are, you know, putting money in there based on the policy, and also making some, some of the payments. Is that something that you guys, you as in finance, going to take a look at a little bit more deeper as far as is that the best way to handle the 115 trust and then potentially go through the finance, like, is that, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think I, I mentioned earlier that we are planning to just bring a general pension update in the fall with our quarterly budget report, and we'll provide updated numbers that we receive from CalPERS at that time. And then, as you mentioned, kind of just relooking at the whole process and program, or when I say program, I mean, I guess, the way we're managing the unfunded liabilities and, you know, looking at our pension policy, and if there's anything, you know, the best practices out there that maybe we could add to the way we're handling things here.
One more comment, I just wanted to say, well done to you and your staff for putting this together. I know what it takes to go through the process, and I know you're short-staffed, I saw the numbers earlier, so well done getting it to this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin, I see you, yes.
Yes, okay, so in, you know, Mayor Protem mentioned, you know, about uncertainty and enormous challenges, and, you know, we have to be cautious and everything, so, you know, I, it's a daunting task to go through the budget and everything, but one thing I did notice is that, and, is that we, we haven't had a review of the city attorney's services that we get. I think the last RFP, if I'm not mistaken, was back in 2011? And the last review, the last evaluation, no, yeah, the last evaluation was 2017. So I'm just wondering, I just want to put it, you know, get input from, from our colleagues about, should we go ahead and take a look at that? And just out of our responsibility for the finances of the city is, there's been nothing wrong with the services that we've gotten, but should we look at, you know, issuing an RFP?
Okay.
Councilmember Franklin, just, without making, having an opinion on that, I'm just curious, is that perhaps a future business item, given that the city attorney is a contracted position, so it's a, it would be a request for a future business item?
You could do it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd entertain that, yeah, okay. All right. Any other budget items? Because, oh, what is, I see there's been a motion, Councilmember Lesser?
Just to move this forward, I would propose to the motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-0074, adopting the fiscal year 2026 operating budget, including the updated financial policies, and I'm wondering from the city attorney whether that can be combined with the second motion, or should it be separate?
They should be done separately.
Thank you, so I'll start with that.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Shrelian, call for the question.
Could I just clarify, that would, so we'll be including on Exhibit A, the change to the deputy city manager, and then if it's okay, we would also like to reflect that correct grant amount as well.
Thank you for requesting that clarification, yes, that is the intent of the motion, to reflect those clarif, those revisions, so as amended.
Okay.
That's the second, I presume?
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so...
Then there's a second motion, which we need to make, is that right?
Councilmember Lesser, yes.
And that would be to the adopt Resolution 25-0075, establishing the GAN appropriations limit for fiscal year 2026.
And that's been seconded by Councilmember Tarnay, call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
And I believe those are the only motions we need for this item, and so I'm going to close this section off, up, whatever. I know that there's people who really want to talk about trash, we're going to talk about trash, but we're going to take about a 10-minute break as well. So 8:45, get here by, you know, 8:55-ish? Okay, thank you.
Stay tuned.
Refuse, it's an umbrella term for all disposable materials, both recyclable and non-recyclable, which includes landfill trash, recycling, and organics. And if you've never seen a refuse enclosure, or you're not quite sure how to pick it out of a lineup, this is what it looks like. It is usually where commercial businesses or multifamily complexes store their refuse materials. And there is an ordinance in place that was adopted in the 60s requiring refuse enclosures for commercial parcels. Just briefly, a couple of success stories. When the Manhattan Village Mall went through their massive renovation, they fantastically renovated over seventeen enclosures and brought them up to code. The 100 block is center place. Historically, decades-long code enforcement complications, neighbor disputes, it's a mixed-use area, but that problem was also resolved with a refuse enclosure review. And last but not least, kind of a creative solution. The property already had an enclosure, but one of the containers existed kind of in an alcove, and so they enclosed the alcove. So, a little bit of the timeline, over the last nine months, we've had multiple discussions about the enclosures, starting from September with the direction to consider a moratorium on enclosure ordinance. The direction from the council was to pursue feedback from the business community and try to determine some items for council to consider. Staff held three community business meetings in January and in March. And just recently, in May, staff provided walking tours for multiple members of the council that were in accordance with the Brown Act. It was not all three at once. And they just reviewed the enclosure areas in the downtown and gave kind of like a, an overview, bird's-eye view of what exactly are the challenges. The feedback from the businesses. Your staff report includes both presentations from the January meetings and the March meetings, as well as a summary of the feedback that was received at the meetings. There are four consistent things that stood out. The downtown and north end need special considerations. Not all tenant improvements should require enclosure reviews. Businesses need a way to share enclosure space with their neighbors. And more communal enclosures, such as Lot 3 style, are desired. So there's three potential updates to consider tonight. The first one is, in the municipal code, to separate the downtown Business Improvement District and the North Manhattan Beach Business Improvement District from the rest of the city, creating distinct processes for those areas. Update number two is, what would constitute a refuse enclosure review within the grouping of tenant improvements? So right now, every tenant improvement requires a refuse enclosure review. A lot of the feedback from the businesses was that they would like to not have a blanket requirement across all tenant improvements. And so these four circumstances within tenant improvement would be an update to the enclosure ordinance. So, a refuse enclosure review would be required if the property was going through a change of use, newer modified alcohol beverage control license type, if there was an intensification of the use of the property, and then scope of work large enough to trigger fire sprinkler additions. And then just a special note that, in these circumstances, we would try to create like an alternative refuse enclosure plan, so there's a little bit more flexibility with those properties. The last one is allowing the sharing of enclosures. So, allow for parcels close in proximity to share their enclosure spaces, and this would be accomplished by the use of recorded covenant agreements between the property owners, with the city included as a party to these agreements. Recorded covenant agreements are typically used when parcels share a driveway or utility box, and so, in consulting with the city attorney's office on multiple occasions, the recorded covenant agreement is the preferred avenue for this sort of solution. And then just one additional consideration, there was an extraordinary amount of feedback from the business community wanting the city to take a stronger approach toward communal enclosures and perform research. Definitely a priority from the businesses. And a detail was that they be included on city property for the city to maintain and to have a similar structure to Lot 3. And at this point, I'd like to bring up Eric Lee, our Public Works Director, to talk about the next part.
So, as Anna mentioned, this is a two-part item, and this relates to the larger refuse enclosure ordinance conversation, because the council gave us direction some months ago to extend an agreement that the Live Oak Tavern has, the Bruco property, to extend that until the council can consider potential changes to the ordinance that you had directed us to work on. And so, you know, really, just in summary, there was a renovation done last year at Bruco without permits, and as-is plans were submitted to the city after that work was performed, and it didn't meet the requirements of our refuse enclosure ordinance. We requested them to update plans to show the proposed enclosure, which they did, and they also entered into a deposit agreement with the city and deposited $100,000 with us guaranteeing the ultimate construction of that enclosure and compliance with the code. And with that, and some other changes that were made to the property to make it compliant, they issued a temporary certificate of occupancy. The deadline for compliance for completing all the work, including the trash enclosure, was December 31st. That deadline has come and gone. And the report indicates that the trash enclosure, as well as some other items, still have not been completed. At this point, it's really just the trash enclosure and the inspections associated with that. And so, as I mentioned, council previously directed us to extend the deadline. We don't have a current agreement with Live Oak Tavern LLC on this matter, and so we're looking for direction from the council on how to handle this issue. And so, you know, next steps, looking at feedback, looking for feedback from the council on whether to bring back a real ordinance to introduce and ultimately adopt, codifying these three changes that have been suggested by the business community. Also looking for requests for direction on exploration of communal enclosures. And then, as I mentioned, the Live Oak Tavern deposit. You know, one of the things that did want to mention, and we talked about this in some of our walking tours, and as Anna mentioned, demonstrated in her slideshow, cities made tremendous strides over the last many years as it relates to cleaning out the public right-ofways, relates to trash, getting containers out of the, out of sight, getting them in proper enclosures, and improving sanitation of our congested business areas. And so, and it's not been by accident. We had direction from council to do that, and staff from many departments have labored intensely to get us to this point. And so, and there's been great success there, but obviously, there's constraints for the businesses in doing so, and there's a friction that we're trying to resolve, and trying to make sure that we've got a good path going forward that really satisfies all the community's needs. And so, you know, just wanted to make sure the council is aware of that, that the direction we're currently heading has been solving these problems. It's been taking years to get there, but we're heading in a direction, and if we, if we change that, it will change that trajectory somewhat. And with that, we're available to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Director Lee. I do have a couple of questions, and I'm going to kick it off. And this actually might be a question either for interim Community Development Director or Talene, or you. So, I know that there's some talk about Live Oak Tavern, that work was done as its plans were submitted after work was performed. Do we have a process now, either for homeowners or businesses, where somehow we discover that work has been done without a permit? And let's say the homeowner or the business owner goes, "Oh, I didn't know," or "Oh, shoot," you know, and they present the work, and it meets all the standards, so then we give them a permit. But is there a fine process? Is there a process for getting a permit after work is done if somebody? So, Talene, maybe you can answer it.
I think I'm hearing that the question is, is there a retroactive permit process?
Is there? Yes.
So, the answer is yes, we have to have that, because if someone were to do the work without a permit, and the city finds out, we don't just let that be, right? You have to retroactively obtain your permits, and sometimes there are instances where someone would have to cut a piece of drywall off so that we could inspect the electrical, for example.
I see.
Inspections do proceed as they would have normally after the permit is issued, to ensure that everything is to code.
Great. That helps. And so, and here's the comment I actually want to kick off with, which is, while that tour, I want the community to understand what this tour was. It was a comprehensive holistic look at how we handle refuse in our community, which does involve Public Works, it does involve community development, and businesses, and everything. And I did this once before and learned a ton, but I have to call out Anna, Anna Luke Jones. Holy cow. So you know a lot about trash. Okay. But I'm not sure, if you didn't take the tour, or if you don't know at home, we don't offer this tour to the public, but Anna spends a great deal of her time every day dealing with trash mediation. She would, we'd walk down, we'd walk down a alley, and she'd say, "Oh, this alley? This alley, lots of mediation." I spent a lot of, I had no idea. So, she's working with the businesses, working with the residents, and it was fascinating, and thank you. So, I just want to make that comment, and now, Councilmember Lesser.
I just wanted to clarify, the first element of what we're being asked to provide direction on has to do with potential updates to the refuse enclosure ordinance, and they were summarized very quickly, but I just wanted to confirm what the scope is of the direction you're looking for with these options, one, two, and three.
Yeah, so, we're looking for, if these are concepts that resonate with the council and want us to bring back an ordinance to adopt, I think we would want direction on each of the three items. Like, for example, the first one being, do we want to have a special carve-out in the code that for businesses in downtown or North Manhattan Beach, there's a separate track for them to gain compliance under the code? And I think it's a, it's, part of it's a principal perspective, do we want to do that or not? And so, we're looking for direction from the council on that. This next one about having a more rigorous threshold for tenant improvements before the full trash enclosure review process kicks in, we think we've provided a good recommendation as to how to make it a little more fair and have it not just, anytime anyone pulls a permit, they're caught up in a net and they've got to wriggle their way out of it. And so, looking for direction from the council, do we want to pursue something like that? And then similarly, with, with the shared enclosures, is that something that we want to really blaze a new trail in our code at least, and allow for that? And if so, the parameters that we're suggesting with recorded covenant agreements, is that, is that what you'd like to see when we bring an ordinance back?
Very helpful. Thank you. I have questions about options one and three. With regard to option one, and that is separating the downtown Business Improvement District and the North Manhattan Beach bid from the rest of the city, the staff report explores some of the benefits of doing so, particularly following input, comments from the local business owners. What could be some of the negative aspects of having a separate code for those areas?
Well, I think, I think what it would do, it's going to slow the redevelopment of trash enclosures, so to speak, refuse enclosures. And so, it's going to, it would be applying a different standard, where right now, new development and tenant improvements are essentially treated on very similar tracks, and this would make that different. And we allow for businesses in these two distinct areas to evolve at a different rate.
When you say "slow," are you thinking of the staff time to approve applications, presuming this is codified and adopted as part of our municipal code?
No. So, thank you for that question. To clarify, you know, right now, our ordinance was adopted about fifty years ago, maybe sixty years ago, and we've made progress, and we're heading this way, where at this point, we're applying the ordinance equally across the entire city for all types of development. And it's requiring every property owner to comply in the same manner, whether they have excess square footage or not, to be able to do that. This would create a different track for our more space-impacted areas, and it would allow businesses to do improvements to their properties without having to necessarily address the refuse aspects to them with, within some parameters.
Got it. With regard to the third option, third proposal, which is regarding allowing parcels in close proximity to share enclosure spaces, which is separate and apart from whether or not there's a designated zone downtown in the north end, I wanted to better address, if we could, the concerns by some of the business owners that a recorded instrument, recorded covenant, would be a non-starter for many property owners. I guess I want to better understand the tools that are currently available to the city if a business owner downtown doesn't, I think the example, better way to approach the question, the example is if a, someone who's a party to that sort of an agreement goes out of business, or the ownership changes, and they no longer are able to share a container, I want to understand what the existing remedies are to address that without a recorded covenant. Can we yellow-tag the company, the property, for example? Maybe that's a question for Public Works, or maybe that is, sorry, for Community Development as opposed to Public Works, but what tools do we currently have available if we don't have a recorded instrument?
So, I think the scenario would be, we would allow the sharing, but without the recorded covenant agreement, you'd have something more of like an operating agreement between businesses.
Thank you.
And if one of them, for whatever reason, was unable to continue to fulfill that, that need for the partnering business, that partnering business then has a refuse problem. And so, the mechanism that we have currently at our disposal would be the code enforcement process. You can't have your containers in the public right-ofway, and citations potentially getting, you know, revoking certificate of occupancy for the business. That sort of process, which is an enforcement, quite frankly, labor-intensive process for us to get there. And so I think, you know, the advantage, certainly for the businesses, are those agreements would be much more accessible to them, because getting recorded covenant agreements certainly is, is, that's a high bar. The upside for the city in doing that is that the city would be a party to those agreements, and they couldn't be revoked without the city being involved in it. And we don't have to worry about a situation, say, five years from now, where one of the businesses has a problem and can no longer participate in that, and then potentially overnight, we have a public problem, where we have an enforcement issue, and then we have the issue of, do we allow this business to stay in operation, or do we, are we having to force them to reduce their services or go out of business entirely because they no longer are able, they no longer have the resources to deal with their refuse appropriately?
Helpful. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just to piggyback on that question, is it possible that if, if we don't go with the covenant route, and we have just an operating agreement between the two parties, if one of the, if the new owners can't come to agreement, then aren't we in the same situation that we're, that we would be in prior to that operation, that agreement? They'd still have to find a solution for their refuse, in the handling of their refuse?
Somewhat. I think that the problem we have at that point is that you've got, you potentially have a new business that's starting, that we don't have, is not existing today, but let's say they started tomorrow, and they were able, let's say it was a full-service restaurant, and they were able to accommodate all their refuse with a sharing agreement. If that evaporated, now we, now we have a new refuse problem in our city that we have to resolve, and that's, that's different than what we have right now.
And if, that's only the case if they don't make any changes, any big changes to their restaurant, right? So, I'm just thinking, if somebody purchases a new restaurant and keeps it as-is, and there was an agreement in place, and then the person who they are leasing space, or they have an agreement with the previous owner, and the new current owners do not, you know, come to terms with whoever owns the refuse enclosure, and they, that's the only scenario where then you have to, that you, as a city, we have to deal with that, that individual business, right? I'm just trying to balance the burden, right? The balance, the burden of all the businesses having to, who want to participate in a shared enclosure, having to, to record a covenant, which I know is an onerous process, versus scenarios that may not come up in every single case, but only certain case, so that, you know, we have a balance of the burdens between the businesses and the city. So, that's, you know, I'm just trying to understand that. And then if we do go with the route of a city enclosure, then conceivably, that new business can have another option, which is to participate in a city enclosure?
Yes. If that was direction from the council, we could explore creating those, you know, we're calling them communal.
Communal enclosures.
Refuge enclosures that, you know, the concept originated from the business community, it'd be something similar to Lot 3, where it's on city property, it's maintained by the city, but the businesses pay their fair share of operating expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sherrill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate Councilmember Tarnay's comments. I, I am concerned, I'm not sure, I haven't been convinced that the covenant is the right vehicle for this. You know, it is a cumbersome, lengthy process, and, you know, I want to give it some more thought, but I'm not sure that that is the right. The other question is regarding Live Oak Tavern, it says in the staff report, it got, you know, we extended it to March 31st. So, what has happened? What, what's it going to take to relieve that obligation? What needs to happen?
Well, yeah, I think that the property owner is looking for direction from the council on what, if there's going to be changes to the ordinance, and he can probably speak better to what his intentions are, but, you know, at this point, our, our agreement has expired, the funds have cleared the check, and the city possesses them. And so I think that they're, that the council could, could direct us to do all the updates to the ordinance, and we could come back this summer, and you could adopt a new ordinance, and the council could direct us to revise the agreement, to give the property owner extra time to comply with the ordinance as-is. I think that's all the discretion of the council.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to beat this dead horse, it's not really a dead horse, about the operating agreement model, sharing of enclosures. I don't think, my understanding is, okay, these two businesses decide to share this enclosure that exists on one business land, right? So they come up with an operating agreement. Business B, let's see, leaves, and then a new business comes in, and they don't want to share the enclosure. They still, we're, we're not saying, well, they'd have to, there's no, nothing, I mean, they'd have to provide trash bins, I mean, or an enclosure, right? I mean, it's not like they're not going to take care of their trash. They're just not doing it with the agreement they, the prior business had.
So, our expectation would be they would have to find another solution.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at, and it, maybe I'm tired, I, I don't know, but is that by us doing this, or by, if we were to approve, say, yeah, let, let a couple of businesses do that, let them do that, we're not saying that they're, they don't have the obligation to provide for trash if something should happen to that enclosure agreement. So, any, any agreement that they would enter into, we would have to be a party to it, whether it was covenant or not, wouldn't we?
The covenant, yes. If there was an agreement between two parties, not, not necessarily the city would be involved. I think we would want to be aware of it, or have a copy of it.
But that's why you got, I think the city was suggesting covenant, so we would be a party to it, so we would make them understand that, hey, if this doesn't work out, you still are on the hook for your trash, which, if we write the ordinance correctly, I would also state that.
Well, I think that ordinance currently states that they're on the hook for their trash.
Sorry. Okay. I have beat the dead horse.
Mayor, you know, to that point, I think, from an operating agreement perspective, that could work for many, many years. It could work in many situations. The, the thought process behind covenants is, that's a great backstop for the municipality in, in that it's thrusting these obligations exclusively on the private parties without us having to be involved when there's change in ownership or operating pattern.
Okay.
Property.
If there's a change in ownership of the properties, or the businesses want to operate in a different manner.
Different manner.
We don't have to, we wouldn't be involved in that if we had a covenant.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser.
I wanted to ask the city attorney, based on his experience working with other jurisdictions, are you familiar with a model that involves a joint operating agreement as opposed to a covenant?
I am not. I'm trying to think of some of the other cities. Manhattan Beach is kind of unique, and I'm not sure what they do in Hermosa, because they have the similar problems with space. Other places don't have those space constraints that we have here. We have much smaller lots, and that's really what the issue is.
I thought the issue was enforcement, we were just hearing, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that, based on, I don't have really any experience with other cities of dealt with this issue. Back to the covenant, yes, it's the safest course of action, it provides the most protection to the city. And the director has talked about the situation where a business that has the enclosure, and so there's a restaurant next door that's using that enclosure, new business comes in and tells the restaurant, "No, find another solution." So that's the concern. It's the safest course of action, but there, there are alternatives, as the director mentioned, code enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Tarnay.
Just to follow up on that again. So to me, what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing is that we have to go through this exercise regardless of when this takes place, but if, I'm concerned that we're disincentivizing property owners to work with one another when they have to encumber their property, you know, for the, you know, for the long-term, for a solution that might, may only affect them X numbers of years. So, so as I am hearing, we do have other mechanisms to enforce just trash, the handling of the refuse enclosure, just in general, correct? So even if the parties don't agree to a covenant agreement that, for the shared enclosures, the city would still have other avenues to, to enforce mishandling or misstorage of refuse?
Yes, and that would be essentially the code enforcement process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any more questions before I open it up to the public? Then I shall do so. Who wants to talk trash? You've got three minutes. I know. I just, I know, you said not to.
You're in the penalty box.
I just, I couldn't resist.
Put a lid on it.
Can it?
John Tolkien with the Metlocks property. First of all, I want to commend Eric and his team for really reaching out to the community and being open-minded to solutions for this. I think the best solution in the downtown is sharing of facilities, like parking, trash, because we really don't want to see trucks circling the downtown to pick up trash from every individual building, just like you wouldn't want each building providing parking and have curb cuts that impact pedestrian flow. I mean, I think that's the goal, to make it really pedestrian-friendly in the downtown. So trash can be the same thing, especially given, in our downtown, we have people blocking buildings that are loading and parking illegally and whatnot, so the trash, it comes by, has to circle three or four times, and just add to that when you increase enclosures. So I'm a big fan of that. In terms of the covenant, I think it's a great solution for the city, because they never have to worry that those two people will continue to do it, but the burdened property owner, who has the encumbrance of that covenant on their property, is unlikely to agree to do it, because there's nothing that would compensate me, you, on our properties for letting somebody in perpetuity be able to put their trash on our property, because it affects our flexibility in terms of use, sale, and... because it affects our flexibility in terms of use, sale, and other things. So I'm not a big fan of that. What I would like to say is that some agreement, maybe it's an operating agreement, a license, whatever would be that appropriate agreement, should be available. I understand the challenge is that the burdened property might say, hey, we no longer want to do this. Maybe it's a three-year agreement or five-year, that could, you know, maybe it corresponds with the lease, but at some point in time, maybe they can't find a place to put their trash. What do you do? God, I'm running out of time, this is great. And I do think there needs to be a hardship solution. I think our goal with the downtown is to have our buildings and uses evolved to be the vision of what we want this downtown to be for the future. I can think of two cities that I'm involved in, that I have projects with cities as my partners, Claremont and Pasadena. Frankly, we haven't been asked, as we've intensified uses, to change our trash enclosure. So I don't know what's precipitating it in this city. I'm not saying that we shouldn't comply, but I do think where there's an opportunity to get public trash enclosures throughout the downtown, even buying or renting parking spaces from property owners that have them, let's go ahead and do that. It could be a revenue source for you guys to lease out those to people that want to participate. But I think let's not have this restrict the ability for uses to upgrade. The other thing I wanted to say is that I'm not sure, like, take Lemonade. A lot of disposable product, food use, a lot of trash, because it was all disposable. Now, say we put a restaurant, and it's not disposable stuff. Are we intensifying the actual trash when the use might be intensified? So that's another question. I think we're talking about intensification of trash.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jill Lampkin, Executive Director for the Downtown Business. Don't you take my time while I'm just announcing my name? I'm looking at you, you're too sweet. I'm actually also representing the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce tonight, because they also have a contract with North Manhattan, so I'm representing North Manhattan Beach. And hence the joint letter that we sent to you. Thank you for starting that now.
Can you give her an extra two minutes?
You should cut me off. So a couple of things that I wanted to mention. I know you guys got the letter. The big thing that I want to emphasize to the public, if you haven't read the letter, is that the bid for downtown Manhattan Beach and the association have said that this is so important, that we believe in this so much, that we have agreed to, as an organization, put $25,000 per trash enclosure that's built. And North Manhattan hasn't had the meeting yet, but said that they intend to bring it up at their next meeting and anticipate some results. So we do want to, you know, encourage this in every way that we can. I did want to point out one thing, that I know there's a lot of talk about the agreement versus the covenant. Right now, we have a lot of businesses that share trash. It's not like this is a new scenario. It's just that it would be a more formalized enclosure, so more people could be involved. If somebody decides, and I'll give you a perfect example. When I owned, when I owned Sprout downtown, my trash was shared with the 900 Club. And I paid him every month, and then all of a sudden, he went, you guys have too much trash, and we can't all fit. And I had to figure out what to do with my trash, because I still had to comply with whatever the code was. So it, it exists already, whether, however you document that. I think that there's a way to do it and enforce compliance without burdening the property holder in perpetuity. I just think that's a very difficult scenario. I also just wanted to say, I think that the benefits so far outweigh, in terms of getting, I know that you're saying we're, we're losing, that we're, we're maybe taking a step back in terms of getting things enclosed in buildings, but I think this would actually be a step forward in actually getting things enclosed. Because to some degree, businesses don't want to do a remodel to a certain level, because they can't find the space or afford to take out the, the revenue-generating space to create space for trash. So they're just sitting on not remodeling something because of the trash situation. So I think it actually would help in the, in the bigger picture to make it better. And no lie, I was sitting in my office, working on my computer, when I smelled this terrible smell, and I walked outside the building, and there's the big black smoke, and it really was the trash enclosure at Fishing with Dynamite, engulfed in flames. Fire runs here, like, you know, fire treats here. It, it, it happens, and it goes to say why, you know, updating these, protecting the runoff to the ocean and creating a safer environment, all those things make sense. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Eric and team. You guys were awesome.
Okay.
Mayor, Council, Michael Zissler, Downtown Business Owner. I would like two time clocks, one for the trash enclosures, and one for Live Oak Tavern.
You get one.
I can't do it in one.
Well, you get, you know what? It's, it's one item, Mike.
It's not, it's two items. You know, I felt like I was besmirched here in this report, so I'd like to address the question.
I think you, I think that would, that you really should.
That's why I want to bifurcate it, because you put two issues together. That's my first question, if you allow that tonight.
I'll give you five.
Five? Sounds like you negotiating a salary deal. Okay, pretend.
Okay, don't make me mad, man.
No, 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 not at all, not at all.
Okay.
Potential update, number one, the refuse, you know, the two different districts, that, that concept came from council. I just want to refresh everybody's memory. I thought it was a great thing, they referred back to New Orleans and stuff like that. You know, we're a unique city, we have unique conditions, we have very limited space in our north end and our downtown. So that's where that came from. Potential update, number two, I think city staff, city business owners, community residents came up with a great plan. The thing that's great is that D, and that was something Ryan Heiss came up with for requiring fire sprinklers. So if you do more than 25% remodel to a business, it triggers fire sprinklers, which brings your code, and it, and it triggers a trash enclosure. So then when you go to three, and we talk about this covenant, or this lease, or whatever, I don't think that should be allowed on any new business. So if you're, if you go back to A, change of use, change of use requires a trash enclosure. But we're talking about existing businesses. So the idea is, on the potential three, allowing shared enclosures, if you let an agreement happen, you're better off than if you don't let an agreement happen, because they already have their trash in the alley. These are existing people with the existing problems. Does that make sense? It's not a new, it's not like you're letting somebody open a new restaurant and share with somebody with an agreement, then they close. I wouldn't allow it for that. So I hope that clarifies that. Now we'll go to Ruko, Live Oak Tavern. Property renovated without permits. I spent over $120,000 on permits that I submitted to the city. I worked on it for over two years with the city, and at the end of the day, I needed a trash enclosure. I said, I'm not putting in a $500,000 trash enclosure. So I decided to do what they call a remodel, just paint, tile. I didn't change the windows in the front, I didn't change the access points, the doors, or anything. And I just want to let you know, that's why I ended up doing that, because I couldn't afford to put in this trash enclosure. But then, when the city did come in, I showed them that I have a trash enclosure that holds all three trash cans, waste, recycling, and food waste. But remember, 40 years ago, there was only one kind of trash. So the burden keeps getting put back on the businesses. Temporary certificate occupancy, and it's been kicked down, the, you know, council said we're doing a thing. I think once this, this new ordinance is written, I think it resolves all the problems. And I think it's a great ordinance, and I hope it comes back to you, and you approve it. And as far as me getting my money back, I think I'm the number one taxpayer in Manhattan Beach. I am, actually. So you know where to find me. I'm insulted that I had to give $100,000, like, I haven't been in business. That business, I've had there for 39 years, okay? I just celebrated 25 years at Rock and Fish this month. Shade's been there for 19 years. I'm not going anywhere. So when the ordinance passes, I guarantee you, I will put it to whatever the new requirement is. I think the only thing I have to do is add a sprinkler head above the trash. That's all I have to do. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for the extra minute.
Look, you still had, yeah, you barely needed it.
Any questions?
Did you set the fire?
I did not. But I will say that everybody's got great video of it, so. I was at home.
You were here, were you?
No, no, I was taking a nap.
Oh, thank you, Mike. That was funny, man. Okay, any other public comments in chambers? Okay, how about on the line, on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, we'll close, public comments. And, let's see. How would like, how would my colleagues like to tackle this? Do you want to go through the updates? Councilmember Lesser, what is your idea?
I know for myself, I'm going to have some requests for further follow-up on the, the proposed direction that staff is seeking on updating the refuge enclosure ordinances. There were at least two meetings with our downtown group. I think there's, what staff states is that we want further information on certain items. They need to be so directed. So at a minimum, I'm curious about other jurisdictions and this idea of alternatives to a covenant. I personally understand why a covenant is being recommended by staff, because it is enforceable. But on the other hand, I appreciate what we're hearing from our businesses, that property owners are not going to want to add a covenant. So I have other comments, but I just, in terms of setting up a framework for us to talk about, I'd like to give some direction, which has not been addressed by the staff report, for me, anyway. But let me stop talking for a moment.
That doesn't, I, I hear some questions from you. I think for me, and I'm not going to give my opinions on, I'll let, but the structure of the discussion, I think we can talk about some of the suggestions from staff. You know, there's, it's of note that if you look at the next steps, council direction slide, which is Slide 17 or Page 1013, you see number three is allow, allow sharing of enclosures. And then, then in bold, it's request for communal enclosures, which are on city property. And that one, the request for communal enclosures, is the one that we would, I think, have to direct staff to come back. Well, in my mind, right now, that's the one I would direct staff to come back to us with more ideas of how, you know, if we take away this parking space, is that okay for the Coastal Commission? What about this, you know, we're building, that, that's a future discussion item for me. But I feel like I might be able to make decisions on those potential updates and the Live Oak Tavern deposit. So, Councilwoman Tarnay.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank staff for all the work that you guys have done to get this. I mean, having lived in town for over 25 years, I've seen the difference at all these, all the solutions that you've come up, working with the businesses. That trash has generally gotten better, and I'd like for it to continue to get better. So for me, I'm going to go through, just kind of give you my thoughts on, on, on each of the items. So for the, for separation of the business district, I would be in supportive of that. I think it makes sense. And these are challenges that are specific to these areas, so I'd be supportive of that. And it was item number two, which is to revise the elements of the TI require review. I think these are all well-thought-out and good triggers for when, and it's a good compromise to, for the city to preserve, you know, control over, and the trash enclosures while allowing businesses to have some flexibility. And then as far as the allowing of the sharing of enclosures, I think it's great. I don't think having a covenant, requiring a covenant agreement will inspire businesses to do that. I think, on the other hand, I think it might deter people from doing that. Right now, they currently have to find solutions anyhow, so I would not be supportive of that. And then I think the communal enclosure idea is fantastic. I hope we see more of it. I think it will, it will ease the burden of the trash trucks. It will allow businesses to free up space to, you know, for their purposes. And then I also think it's, you know, we're hearing the safety issues that are, that came up today, having a separate structure that's, that has sprinklers, and, and that's helpful. And I think, and I do understand the, the challenges with spaces around town, and we will, I think, have to take some parking spots. But I'm hoping that with Parking Lot 3, and then with the 400 MB Boulevard, that we'll have more than enough, we'll never have more than enough parking, but we will have more parking to allow for these, these enclosures. And then we'll, I'll keep listening on the Live Oak Tavern deposit. But, you know, I think, you know, I know the history of Mike Zissler's and his group in town, and I, you know, so I'm willing to listen and decide on that issue.
I just want to clarify something. For the communal enclosures, I mean, I think, I think we're being asked if we're interested in staff coming back to us with further.
Right, we're not. Right, right.
All right, that's what you're saying. Okay, Councilmember Franklin.
Great, thank you. And again, thank you for the tour. I also have lived here for a long time, for over 40 years, and have seen, just from walking by, and, and also talking to the business owners and the like, that the trash is a challenge. It's always a challenge. I thought we could come up with an idea of somehow paying the food, you know, the people who deliver, make deliveries to the restaurants and the like, is take the trash, you know, and bundle it up and let them take it back, and, you know, pay them a little bit to do that. So, anyway, I, I think the solutions that, that grew on their own, you know, have been very good. I don't think that all tenant improvements should require, you know, enclosure reviews. It's just, it's apples and oranges. The, you know, the enclosure review would come, you know, with, with a more significant change of the use, or the change of the interior, or things like that. As far as bifurcating and having refuge enclosure ordinances, you know, from downtown business to the north, you know, to the, you know, to the rest of the city, I think if we approach that gingerly, you know, that, that could be, that could be worked out. The, no, no owner wants covenant on their property. It's just, when it comes time to sell, and there's all sorts of reasons that people come to sell. You know, divorce, death, they want to move, things like that. And any, and these covenants can, can restrict the sale. So I would say code enforcement is a perfect, you know, a perfect solution to that. If I'm the land, you know, if I'm the owner of the building, and it was a restaurant, and now a different kind of, you know, less trash-producing business wants to, you know, wants to rent it, they shouldn't be obligated, you know, to, to taking care of others' trash. It just, it becomes a challenge for them. And, let me see. I think that's it, is that all, that's all we're asked, right?
Yeah, I, I feel like, I was going to speak next, but I wanted, Councilmember Shirley, and if you want to make comments, because I'm hearing some common themes.
Thank you, and I'm, we're going to hear more common themes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm for separating the districts. And number two, yes, and allowing shared enclosures, and the, I mean, whatever the slide says. But I would like to have, be able to look at this Live Oak Tavern deposit, because we extended it to March 31st, 2025. I think we need to, my opinion, that we need to extend the date, or, or do something with this meeting, and, because other information's coming back to us. But we should extend this to some greater period.
Before Councilmember Lesser speaks, I just, I want to, I was prepared to make a motion, but bifurcating out the Live Oak piece, and we could have a discussion about that.
Great.
And Councilmember Lesser, I see.
I guess I have some more cautious comments, and I want to offer them in the context, maybe if you're coming up with a bifurcated motion. So I was in Europe 48 hours ago, and I've had about six hours of sleep, which is why I'm a little bit groggy tonight, and was in older cities, very old cities, that of course don't have built-in trash enclosures. And instead, one sees beautiful cities, bags in the streets, and walking late at night, you see the rodent problem, you see the trash problem, as bags are picked through. And frankly, in speaking with merchants, because I knew this item was on the agenda, you heard complaints, complaints about how pickup schedules were working, and separation schedules were different, so that's why bags would be left on the street, because there would be different days for different pickups. I'm cautious about separating our downtown and north end from their main trash. I want to know what the downside is. We began that discussion during questions, I began it with the Public Works Director. and I wanna make sure we know what we're getting into and what this is going to mean, because we all share the same goal. The ordinance, as it's been in effect since nineteen sixty-seven, has resulted in an ever cleaner downtown and north end. We all can recall, for those of us who've lived here, as long as we all have, what downtown looked like as recently as, I think even a decade ago, where there were bins that were outside. There was a problem with rodents and with trash debris and cans.
Not that long ago.
Stirring around, not that long ago. I wanna make sure we're not basically further delaying the larger vision that council had in nineteen sixty-seven, which has now been implemented. So, that's why I don't want to just simply agree tonight to a separation of the districts. I wanna better understand what the implications are, a little more practically. With regard to revising the TI review, I guess is it called, I agree. I think that's a great solution, and I appreciate all the input from our downtown businesses, owners. I, when something that hasn't been mentioned is there was also an ability that staff has suggested that would allow kind of a usurping of the requirements, and I can't remember the name of it, it's called...
The alternate?
The alternate review, where there'd be a practical evaluation of pickups at locations, which could allow applicants to usurp some of the obligations of the code. Thank you. I think that's a practical, good sense idea. Sharing trash without a covenant, I'm hesitant. I think this is an example of where I want more information, before I would say no covenant. I would like an example of other jurisdictions that have this, this, we're not unique here. Other jurisdictions have the same problem, and I'd be curious what their agreements are, because just as the covenant would impose challenges with regard to getting a tenant to get their ownership to agree, so too is this enforcement issue. Because what happens after a business has been in business for a number of years and they lose that partner, just as our current head of our downtown bid indicated, that they lose their opportunity to comply because the business with whom they share enclosure no longer...
They still have to comply.
They still have to comply. I wanna better understand what the staff resources are to pursue code enforcement. I just wanna make sure we know what we're getting into. Commercial, communal reciprocals, certainly with our temporary Lot Three, we expressed a willingness on behalf of the city to underwrite the cost on city property by giving up a parking space that is the public's property to be able to have a trash enclosure. But I wanna make sure we understand what that balancing act is. By allowing our restaurants and other businesses to have greater capacity, we, as a city, would be underwriting the cost to the extent that we're giving up a parking space or public property to allow the construction of a permanent communal enclosure. So, I wanna be careful there, make sure we're looking at that, because there aren't that many public spaces for communal enclosures. We only have really downtown Lot Three and potentially now this new property of four hundred Manhattan Beach Boulevard. With the Live Oak Tavern deposit, I agree with Councilmember Sherrillian, I think we should explore extending the terms of that agreement, which is by its own terms expired. So, I think we need to provide an extension. So, I wanted to basically muddle up your motion. How have I done?
Not at all. Not at all. I'll, I'll tell you what I'm gonna propose. So, I disagree with you about separating out downtown and north end. I mean, they're not separating it out from each other, they're separating it out from the citywide ordinances, which, you know, you look at the mall and the real estate they have versus those two districts. I think it's really smart to do that, and I, you know, I think we, there's complete agreement on number two, we all agree on that. And I think, I agree with the, I think the majority of the colleagues about an operating agreement would be sufficient. As Jill mentioned, people share enclosures now. It's not taking the responsibility off of a business to take care of their trash. If the shared agreement doesn't work out, and they get really mad and they need to sue each other, that's fine, they still have to abide by any law, you know, any policies that we have. That's just a method. So, I, I would say I'm ready to go with that. An agreement can be enforced.
Mayor, if I could add, you know, one thing's if the council wanted to pursue the agreement framework, we could make the city a party to that agreement, too.
That's what I was asking before.
So, we could be, we could, minimum, get notice, and...
Sure.
And two, be involved in some type of early mediation or preparation.
So, I think that's a great solution. And, I mean, I think, and it's part of what the person, you know, Anna's position deals with, right, is making sure people are abiding by their, you know, agreement, their refuse solutions, right? So, you know, items one, two, and three, I'm a yes, yes, yes on. Now, I think it's interesting, if you look at item number two, which is, you know, the TI tenant improvement requirement, and that the applicants now would have, if we pass this tonight, the applicants would have the ability to have an alternative refuse enclosure plan. So, we pass it, let's say we pass, let's say we pass, tonight, sorry. That would mean that, whatchamacallit, Live Oak Tavern should get their deposit back now, because, because they, you know, part of that alternate plan might be two-day, you know, twice-a-day pickups, twice-a-day trash pickups, seven days a week, that, you know, so I think if we do that, but that's, I'm bifurcating that, so my motion would be...
Mayor, can I jump in a little bit?
Yes.
Your excitement about trash is wonderful.
Wow.
And, you know, but one of the things, I wanna just make sure that it's clear, is we're looking for direction on to bring back an ordinance to change that into the future, so that adoption of ordinance is likely to happen in the summer, assuming it meets your approval when we bring it back.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I'm kinda proud of my enthusiasm, you know, it's like Oscar the Grouch.
We need a pink trash can.
Yeah. Well, I have several at home. So, my, so I do, and I see there's people speaking, I also want us to explore the request for communal enclosures. I'm not sure I'm gonna end up supporting it, right, because it might be too cumbersome in terms of taking up too much public real estate. It might not work, and we might not be able to make it happen. But I think we should explore it, and I actually think Mr. Tolkien brought up probably the best argument for it, is less, you know, stops by the trash truck is better for everybody. So...
Were you gonna bifurcate the motion for the...
Yeah, I will bifurcate the motion.
Live Oak?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna bifurcate it, but I see you. I'm not gonna make a motion till I, till you get to speak.
Okay.
Okay. You gotta trash my ideas?
No, no, no. No, 'cause I agreed with them before you expressed yours, so that's fine. But I just wanna make a point about the ten years, you know, let's just, and this is what became clear on the, you know, where you're sipping all this wonderful wine, and Spain, we're going through the trash.
Looking at trash bags.
Yeah. So, but, you know, but what became apparent is that there's not much room left, you know, all the holes have been cut into the buildings and, you know, restructured inside the foundations and everything like that, you know, above there. So, so anything we can do in terms of helping to improve that situation, find all the different spots, but also the communal, you know, we're a partner with our businesses, you know, it isn't like, you know, they are paying, in the instance of Lot Three, the direct users of it, but, you know, we're getting sales tax from them. We wanna help them facilitate their business. They're not getting it for free, but we're also generating, you know, revenue for the city as well, so it's well worth it, you know, to look into those communal. Even at, you know, Steve, maybe we can do a calculation of the value of a parking spot versus the value...
That's easy, that, we have that.
Yeah, we did, we almost did that, didn't we?
No, we have.
Hey, Libby.
No, we, Libby has that, trust me.
Yeah, we do, we have it.
We have that.
I know, I'm just kidding. But that's all I wanted to say about it.
And, and to your point, though, too, and I did make a motion, but first of all, we, let's say again that the downtown business and north end business is gonna vote on it, is putting money towards a solution, if we do go for communal enclosures. So, that's...
Very important.
It is important. I guess also, again, I wanna wait to see what comes back at us, and, you know, there's gonna be, we won't have an answer on the communal enclosures for a while, 'cause we don't know what we're building and yada, 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 but there is a public benefit to having the trash enclosed, so it's not like we're giving away something. But, so here's my motion. So, I would, I, I like the potential updates to the ordinance, one, two, and three, separating downtown and north end from citywide, oh, wait, let me see this, what am I supposed to say? Revising the elements of tenant improvements, requiring enclosure reviews, and allow sharing of enclosures with operating agreements. That's my first motion. I'll get to the communal, and I'll get to the Live Oak, but that's my first one, and I see it's been seconded by Councilwoman Nina Tournay. Call for the question. It's, you know, I almost cursed.
Motion passes five zero.
And by the way, when you come back, when, you know, I approve, or I approve, I made those motions, but, you know, Councilmember Lesser made, asked some good questions about other, you know, communities and stuff, so please include that when you come back to us. I would also like staff to look into the reality and, you know, all the stuff with communal enclosures, so that would be my next motion. That has been...
And again, this is direction to come back.
This is direction to come back. This is not saying, yes, we're doing communal enclosures in the whole city. Go ahead.
And to be clear, we're likely to come back with the ordinance updates much quicker than the communal enclosure research.
Oh, heck, yeah. I hope you do, 'cause if you wait for that, it's gonna be too long. Okay, great. So, did you, does everyone understand that?
Yes, just waiting to...
Motion. Wait, you can't do it. It won't let me vote.
Back up again?
Nope, no.
No, no, I just did it, so just back up.
And now do it again. Nope.
No.
Can we do a roll, or a vote?
Absolutely. Mayor Haworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tournay?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherrillian?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Lesser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thanks, y'all. Okay, so the Live Oak Tavern, did you wanna take the lead on that one? I've been making motions.
Yeah, you have. I think at this stage, I would, I would make a motion to relieve Live Oak of the obligation under the agreement and provide the deposit and refund his money.
Okay, are you making that motion?
Yes.
Well, you should press the button.
Hit motion.
It's getting late.
Okay, that's fine, but I have a, Councilmember Lesser.
I guess I would have, was it, I was hearing you going in a different direction earlier, Councilmember, and that was that because we still have not arrived at what a new policy might look like, this is what all other businesses would be required to do in conformance with our code. What is the message we're sending to every other business that might propose a TI? I don't know if there are any other businesses that currently are under review in these sections, but this is a carve-out, which I think is unwise, and it's with no prejudice or disrespect towards the Live Oak proprietorship, but I don't think we should be doing so at this time. I think we should extend the agreement to hold this deposit in what terms. That's it.
Councilmember Tournay?
Just to understand, just to, you know, piggyback again on Mayor Potem's comment there, now that we're adopting, we're revising which elements trigger the TI review, we're also then for the, for Live Oak Tavern, he would undergo the alternative refuse enclosure plan, right? We still have some ways to effectuate the enclosures that we want.
Yeah, assuming the ordinance gets adopted the way we're talking about right now under the previous motion, there would be this alternative plan. Presumably, the owner would be exploring all avenues, including that plan. There's also the sharing with agreements, perhaps he pursues that. So, I think that there's, there's value in extending the expiration date, allowing us to get to a new ordinance, allowing us to evaluate the current situation under that ordinance. So, that, I think that protects the city the most at this point.
Go ahead, Councilmember Franklin.
I'm basically gonna say the same thing as for passing that, the new ruling, you know, the new ordinance, that it basically relieves him of that obligation, so...
Well, I think what there's, what staff is saying, go ahead.
I was gonna say, just to clarify, that gives the operator more options, right? But we, the city still has to work through, well, which option is the operator gonna choose? How are we going to memorialize that? So, all of that still has to happen.
Right.
Can I ask a question, Your Honor? So, Director Lee, when would the ordinance come back to us? Thirty days, sixty days?
I would say probably the earliest would be August, by the time we can, we introduce it in August, and then probably adoption in September.
So, I really, I really appreciate your concern about a carve-out, and normally, I mean, I think in practice, that's what I prefer, how I prefer to act. The reason that I am more predisposed to give the deposit back to Mr. Zisslos is we haven't had code enforcement violations. I mean, his trash is picked up, he has extra trash now, he's, you know, if the problem we're trying to solve is getting trash out of the public right of way, and if the problem we're trying to solve is to, you know, stop runoff into the ocean, I think he's taking care of that. Now, if he were all of a sudden, okay, I got, I got my money, and now I'm not gonna get his money in trash pickups, which I don't, he's not that kinda guy. He's been doing this stuff for a long time. I'd be worried, but I think he has paid the price. I think next ti, you know, next time, you know, and maybe it's a different situation, but I think, I vote for the original motion that you made. Councilwoman Tournay?
Thank you, and I would agree with that. I think, you know, that hundred thousand dollar deposit which preceded my time is just to ensure that, that there is some compliance, that the trash, during that walking tour, you know, I was able to see what, you know, what the arrangements were, and I didn't see a problem with trash in that section, so I'm comfortable that, that you guys can come to an agreement, and I don't think that that hundred thousand dollars is what's gonna take to get there. I think it's gonna get there regardless of that.
Did you have other comments, or is that...
No, just to go, just the fact that, I think the point was made, as you indicated. I mean, it's been a year or longer since we've held that deposit, and I think this ordinance is gonna go a long way in taking care of that, so that's all I got.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, and just briefly, is, for that reason, but also, we've gotta start establishing some trust here. Realize that these rules are here for a reason, that they should be followed, and, you know, that's gonna prevent problems like this in the future. So, I think it needs to be, I think it serves as an example to others that, you know, there's a certain way we do things, it's a good reason why we do things. I'm not gonna speculate on the cause of that fire or the damage that it did, but probably code enforcement, you know, helped mitigate, you know, the damage on that. So, there's a reason why we do this.
Yeah.
And these rules and procedures need to be followed.
Okay.
Mayor, so I'm hearing desire from some members of the council about relieving Live Oak of the obligations and issuing a refund. I think the quandary we have right now is the code as it's currently written, that business is not in compliance with it, and we've got outstanding permits that have been issued that are not final, pending the resolution of these outstanding matters, of which the deposit was going to allow us to get to. And so, I totally get it that Mr. Zisslos is an outstanding member of our community, and we know where to find him, but we, we're also looking for a legal route to get to a resolution as well.
So...
But we, we're also looking for a, a legal route to get to a resolution as well.
So, um, he won't meet until this comes back? Is that the only, but is that the only code? Then, I, yeah, but how can you? Not how can you? Um, go ahead, David. Say what you wanna say.
I wanna see if there might be some consensus on deferring action on this tonight, because you're hearing from staff the challenges of moving forward, and that's what I'm sensitive to. No disrespect, but I, I think this is premature before we've actually even adopted an ordinance, set forth a process so we can get compliance, which is why staff insisted on the deposit to be able to allow Live Oak to open the restaurant when they had proceeded with improvements without a permit. So that's the quandary I'm in.
Okay. Councilmember Sherrillian?
To maybe get consensus, maybe, um, a friendly motion amendment to my motion would be, um, maybe, you know, when this comes back, that, that is when we give the refund.
Um, because...
Meaning August or...
He will have the opportunity under the alternate refuse. No, it's a, but are you guys still saying, but no, you have to see if he comes up with some solution on that alternate refuse plan.
Yeah, so ideally, the, the ordinance we bring back to you meets your approval, you adopt it, it goes into effect thirty days later. In that thirty-day period, we'll be working with him to get all his paperwork together and make sure that he's got a, a proper path to get to compliance. And upon the, the effective date of the ordinance, hopefully, we're in a great spot to deem compliance. And I don't think, I think the council can give us direction now that as, as soon as compliance is obtained, that, that we could issue the refund. That, that would be a, a great step farther than where we're at today, whereas that agreement has expired over five months ago.
So, uh, one thing I wanna be clear on is, clear as mud, the alternative refuse enclosure plan will contain options such as additional trash pickups or perhaps sharing in an enclosure with somebody else, because those are all the things that he is doing. And again, it's, this is not about this person, but this is about when I go down that alley so many nights now, it, it is the cleanest spot in the alley, you know? So I hear the legal process and everything. I'm, I'm not, I don't think we should wait much past August. Councilmember Lesser?
I really wanna try and get to, to a solution and show what we've all been talking about, which is to express our appreciation for the partnership with our longtime business owner. Would Robert's rules allow me to make a substitute motion at this time?
Yes. Yes, Robert's rules does allow you that.
Looking at the city attorney.
Yes, because really, the, the maker of the motion, there's really not a friendly amendment. You just, you modified your motion.
Right.
So you can make a substitute motion.
I guess the substitute motion would be then, as the Public Works Director just stated, as at such time as the city council adopts this new ordinance, to provide an opportunity for the deposit maker, Live Oak, to have an opportunity to review its compliance under that plan, and then once that compliance has been allowed by staff, and forgive me, I'm...
You're doing great. Just say what you're gonna say.
I'm trying to get there.
I know.
Six hours sleep over the last forty-eight hours. To then return the deposit.
Can I?
Yes.
Ask for a friendly amendment to the substitute? Not, or, or, substance, or...
Yes.
I think it's more of a friendly, right?
Friendly, well, it's already a substitute motion.
It's already a substitute, two point O. Is it possible to, because we don't know how long that process is gonna take, I would like to be able to do it when the ordinance is adopted. So, I mean, it's kind of the middle ground. It's not now, it's not later, it's in the middle.
I like that idea.
So I wanna, I truly am trying to find consensus here, but I also wanna respect that there needs to be presentation of a proposal to meet the requirements by the applicant, and I wanna give some leeway to staff to be able to evaluate what the proposal is for compliance of whatever this council adopts as the new rules. So that's the only reason I'm hesitating. I'm looking for a solution, and I welcome wording and approach.
So I think I have an idea. So what we could do is we can, we can prepare the ordinance to introduce. As we're preparing that, we could be working with the property owner to make sure that he understands the framework of what we're gonna be proposing, which he already does because we've been talking about it. And upon introduction of that, of that ordinance, he'll know exactly where he's at, and we can actually include in that report, a, a report on the deposit, and if the council adopts this ordinance, there's a plan in place, and he's either gonna comply or not comply, you'll have that information when we introduce the ordinance. And then at, at that point, you could, you could decide whether you wanna authorize the release of the deposit, or refund of the deposit.
Okay, so it's, it wouldn't be tonight, but it would be in, as you're writing the ordinance, you will work with him. So you, when you present that new ordinance to us, we will know what he's doing to meet the ord, to meet, to comply, so we can decide at that point. So he doesn't have to wait another whatever.
Correct, and when we deal with that issue as urgently as possible.
One technicality to that, and everything can stay on track as just recommended. The only thing is that staff would not be able to issue the final C of O until the ordinance is in effect, so that would be thirty days after. So there would be this middle ground period between when the deposit is released and when the final C of O is issued.
I think, you know, I think that's the best we're gonna get because of the legal ramp, or the, the process of getting the codes up. So what is, what is the motion at this point? Where are we? What is it?
I thought there'd been a, a motion directing staff to proceed. I thought there'd been a parallel direction to come forward at that point, either as a separate motion, sorry, as a separate draft proposal, or consistent with this one, to be able to allow Live Oak to get its deposit back if it's complied with this new ordinance that would be adopted by council. Did I capture that correctly?
I, I can summarize the motion. From what I heard, the motion is to reconsider relieving Live Oak, relieving the deposit for Live Oak at the time that the council considers adoption of the resolution, assuming that the operator has worked in the meantime with the Public Works Department to demonstrate how he would comply with the proposed new regulations.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got it, I got it. I know we're a little, we've been talking about this. He's already been working with staff, though. I mean, hasn't he, I mean, I, it, we don't have any, we don't have the policy, I get that, but he has been working to, you know, okay, I'm gonna, like I say, I keep mentioning extra pickups and extra things. Isn't, is it, I don't know, I feel like he's already been doing it. So I will, I, but if I, I mean, I can support this if it's upon adoption of the ordinance, it, that, assuming that staff, no, staff has to work with him in the meantime, so that when that ordinance is approved, the deposit is released. Not wait thirty days, okay? So the deposit's released, okay?
Yes, the only nuance is at that time of adoption, the council can say, release, release the, the bond. So you can say that, because you'll know by that time, at, at the time of adoption, you'll, you'll probably know, okay, he's, he's complied, or he's going to comply, et cetera. So you, you can defer that decision until the day that you adopt the ordinance.
Okay, okay, but why would we? I mean, our intent is to, to release that, and I think that needs to be clear.
It's certainly clear. It's clear that that's your intent.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion. Let us vote. Guess what, I still can't do it. Nope, we're gonna do oral, roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Sherrillian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Haworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tournay?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, um, item number eighteen is, is kind of a twofold kind of thing, right? Where we have to adopt an urgency ordinance and then conduct the appointment, correct? But I'll let you guys make.
Thank you.
Mayor, before the city clerk?
Oh, we have to...
Do you think you'll be going past eleven? Or you think you'll be done before eleven?
I think we should make a motion just in case. I can't, I think we'll be done, but just in case.
Okay. Mr. Martin, to extend the meeting, past eleven o'clock.
It's been moved and seconded, so let's take a vote, do it, just do it oral, just assume I'm not working.
Councilmember Tournay?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Haworth?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherrillian?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay.
Okay. Our members of the city council, thank you, this is item number eighteen. This item is coming back as a follow-up from the May sixth council meeting with direction regarding additional boards and commission seats, and Deputy City Clerk Brianna Contreras will be taking the lead on the presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Brianna Contreras, Deputy City Clerk. At the May sixth city council meeting, the city council discussed increasing the membership of the Culture Arts Commission and the Library Commission from six to seven members by adding one member at large. Currently, the Parks and Recreation Commission consists of seven members, while the Culture Arts and Library Commissions each have six. This change will bring consistency across all three Parks and Recreation Commissions. City council further directed staff to expand youth engagement by adding one alternate student representative to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Culture Arts Commission, and the Library Commission. The student will serve as the alternate to the delegate student who was appointed at the May sixth city council meeting. For the record, following the posting of the agenda, Isabel Borak contacted the city clerk's office to withdraw her application for the alternate student representative seat. Tonight, I'm presenting for your consideration an urgency ordinance and the introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending chapter two point four four of the Mahan Beach Municipal Code, which governs the city boards, commissions, and committees. These amendments will address the membership structure for the Parks and Recreation Commission, Culture Arts Commission, and Library Commission. Staff recommends that the city council take the following actions: adopt urgency ordinance number two five dash zero 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 five dash U. If adopted, this will allow city council to make appointments tonight, introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number two five dash zero 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 five. If introduced, staff will return at the next city council meeting for the second reading and adoption. The ordinance will be codified to the municipal code and will go into effect thirty days after adoption, and adopt resolution number two five dash zero zero five two, which formally amends the membership structure for the three commissions to reflect city council's request. The proposed changes will allow city council to move forward with the appointment of several additional members to better support and expand the reference, the representation of these commissions. These new seats include a member-at-large seat for both the Culture Arts Commission and the Library Commission, and alternate student representative seats for the Parks and Recreation Commission, Culture Arts Commission, and Library Commission. These changes are intended to enhance community engagement and provide greater opportunities for both residents and students to participate in the important work for our advisory bodies. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
I think as a threshold question, we have to address whether we should explore the alternate student positions in addition to the member-at-large. And I greatly appreciate the council request to explore additional opportunities for students, but I'm concerned about some logistics, and I may pull out of the bleacher seats, the peanut gallery, our director of Parks and Rec to ask some practical questions about how it would work if we have an alternate student representative as opposed to a member-at-large. So if you indulge me.
Great, yeah, no, he's been sitting here, he might as well, just waiting.
So forgive me for not having a chance to give you a heads up in advance, but first of all, for student representatives appointed to the current commissions, we have library, we have cultural arts, we have Parks and Rec, how long are they in fact, how long is their term in fact? I know it's a year appointment, but how often do those commissions actually meet with the students?
So it, it is a full year. In past years, the summer months, it's been challenging sometimes for the students to, to be available. We usually go dark traditionally in August and December, so it would be a full ten month, ten month.
So it's potentially ten meetings, but potentially fewer, right?
Correct.
So how is staff thinking that an alternate would serve? Would they divide up the, the ten months, or potentially a maximum of ten meetings, where one member would get five meetings, the other would get five? Or is the idea that the alternate would be available to serve in the event that the primary representative is struck by lightning or is unable to attend?
Don't wish it so.
And I, I know this is a policy discussion for, for council, I think that's difficult. I mean, the alternate could be like a juror, you know, and, and just be available as needed. They could split up, you know, six and six, or they could communicate, they could have, the alternate could be communicating with that representative on an ongoing basis to provide updates and guidance.
Here's, here's the real question. The real question I have is, what does this mean in practice for an alternate? That they would have to come to these meetings and sit in the audience, and if I understand, the restrictions would not be able to participate, let alone offer public comment? Which, and for some of these meetings that go on, let's just say, commission meetings can go on for several hours, particularly for high school students that might have other obligations, how would this in fact work?
So I think with that model, it would be difficult. Most of, over the last few years, they're extremely diligent about attending the meetings and being really engaged and involved in providing updates. And so I think the alternate, there would be very few opportunities for them to provide input unless it was a different model.
But they'd be expected to come to the, to the meetings and just sit? They, they could not offer testimony as a, on public comment?
Again, at, at council's discretion, that they could confer with the other representative ahead of time and provide those updates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin?
Can we just think of it as another seat at the ta, seat at the table? I mean...
It's, it, you can't have an even number.
Counsel, just also to, there's only seven seats on the dice.
Oh, oh, it's a space thing, too.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. So there's five now? How many are there now?
One rep, one student...
No, 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 I'm in total on the whole commission.
Um, seven on, currently.
Yeah.
Um, with Parks and Recreation, six, with Culture Arts and Library.
Okay, got you. All right.
So if I could also add, tonight, council is going to make the decision to appoint two the member-at-large seats for the other two commissions. So all three of his commissions will have seven.
They'll all be up to seven.
Yeah.
Additional adult.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So there's really two separate issues. First, there's the ordinances to increase the membership to seven on both the Cultural Arts and the Library Commission, and then you can address the resolution with respect to the student representatives. So I would suggest, after you take some public comment, to...
Well, we have questions.
...address the ordinances first with respect to just adding one member to each of those commissions.
And then deal with the student representatives separately?
I thought, the reason why I've raised the question now is I thought the ordinances included idea, no?
No, the, the ordinances only add the additional person.
The additional adult.
Yeah.
Adult.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the, it's the resolution that addresses the student representatives.
Because we threw that in, okay. All right, it's not threw it in, but, okay. Councilmember Tournay?
Um, I mean, I think we all, in going through the process and listening to all the students, I think there was a desire, there was such a, a desire from the students to serve, so that's why I think it's really important for us as council to, to, I mean, we had twenty, I think twenty-seven students apply for three positions, and so there are such limited opportunities for students to participate. And so I think as far as a, a policy issue or just a logistics issue of how we coordinate this, we could have, we get to set the rules, right? We can say if you're the, the... We can say if you're the, the, um, the representative, you're required to attend, but you also, and then if you're an alternate, you can zoom in just to stay, you know, abreast of what's going on and then coordinate with the representative on the attendance. But I think it gives students the opportunity to see what's going on and, and, and incre, and then also, I think, having a student still in, in school, I think it gives the student an opportunity to have somebody else to speak to about the issues and, 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 you know, the camaraderie of, of participating.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, that was my question. So that can the alternate help out with the group? You know, if they have a project and things like that?
Sure.
I mean, you may not be able to vote on that project, but, you know, when the work is being done, you know, can that person help?
Well, what work are you talking about?
Well, you, you, you see what they do. I mean, sometimes they have a, you know, friends of the lot, you know, the, you know, the Library Commission
Library has it, yeah.
Has a book sale, and so they could be there helping and things like that.
Also, if I could just make one, just one reminder, is that from January to April interviews, we actually did outreach for the student delegate. So if that student delegate was appointed in May, and then we're changing the position now, I, I prefer to wait to change the position. You can still add the alternate to however policy works for the commissions.
That's good information.
Student that was appointed as a delegate, they already have expectations for the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so you don't want to make it so that it's like five, five on and five off, and got you. I have comments, but I'll wait till after we open it up for public comment. Does anyone else have questions? So first of all, we're dealing with the urgency ordinance. And are there any comments from the public? Is she, as a commissioner, is she, um, uh?
Yeah, this issue is only with respect to adding one person. So she can, she can come down and
Come on down, Carol.
Talk about the number.
She's been here the whole time.
Been here the whole time. Always.
Carol Patterson, and I am on the Arts Commission. I feel it would diminish the role of our student to have an alternate. On the Arts Commission specifically, this year, we had a most remarkable student that was there faithfully for everything and had great ideas and participated on committees on his own time. I almost feel like a student could feel that they needed to not be there all the time, so the alternate would have an opportunity. Any student could come to any meeting and could participate in some ways without having an official title. And I definitely agree that it shouldn't be done now. But if it's a concept that, uh, the council is in favor of, that they wait for next year, put that on the shelf for a while. Thanks.
Thank you, Carol. That's very good feedback. Okay, is there anyone, I don't think there's anyone else here from the public. I mean, Jill, you're not going to comment on this. Uh, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Closing public comment. Okay, I'm gonna make a comment or two about the, the student role, the student position. I, I really appreciate what Carol had to say. I absolutely agree with her philosophy or her reasoning that you might feel diminished if there was an, an alternate. And, um, I, you know, these kids have a lot of opportunities to be involved. And sure, they were all great, but I, it's just, it's clunky to me to add. I, I would be more in favor of talking about another commission that's student-based. That's like the Mayor's Youth Council, a real one, or something like that. But I think this is just trying to, this is trying to jam something through. Not, not, you know, just to make an opportunity for a kid. My God, you know, we are also trying to get work done. We are also trying to do, you know, so. And it is hard because of, we can't put both the student and the alternate up here. And if you're an alternate, you, it's, it's very clunky to me. So, uh, so that's where I feel on that, uh, on that issue alone. I do, did, so the, but the urgency ordinance, um, so I, I want to hear discussion on that, but the urgency ordinance is separate.
The urgency ordinance and the ordinance is to add the two member-at-large seats.
So I'll, I'll, Steve, I still want to hear your comments, but I kind of want to get that out of the way so that, because that doesn't impact the student.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Are we gonna vote on the others now?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna do appointments, but we can talk about, go ahead and make your comments. We can talk about whether to do a student, but it wouldn't be part of the urgency ordinance.
No, let's, let's, let's vote.
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve, where's my, uh, the urgency, adopt urgency ordinance number 25-0005-U. Act motion and Councilwoman Tarnay?
And if there's a second, I'll read the title.
Thank you.
Urgency ordinance number 25-0005-U. An urgency ordinance of the city of Mahan Beach amending the Mahan Beach Municipal Code to increase the membership of the Library Commission and the Cultural Arts Commission and declaring the urgency thereof.
And just to clarify, that is only for the adult seat? And this does not affect the other decision? Okay, call for the question, I'm gonna try it. Nope. We have to do it, overall call.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Haworth?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay.
So next would be the regular ordinance. Is there a motion to introduce?
It's the same thing we just did.
Yes.
But we have to introduce it.
Yes.
Yeah. It's been moved by Councilmember Franklin, seconded by Councilwoman Tarnay.
I'll read the title. Ordinance number 25-0005. An ordinance of the city of Mahan Beach amending the Mahan Beach Municipal Code to increase the membership of the Library Commission and the Cultural Arts Commission.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Haworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. So I guess I'm, I'm, so now we can talk about the student issue. Councilmember Sherillian?
I was, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Tarnay. These students are amazing, wonderful, and trajectory is straight up. But now, having heard some of the comments of my colleagues, and of course, Carol as well, I, I've had a change of heart. As much as I want to include them and give them the opportunity, because there's limited opportunities, uh, I have changed my mind.
I, and I see, I just, I also want to comment, it's not that I don't think the kids are wonderful.
They're all gonna be so mad at you guys.
Councilmember Lesser?
I want to echo the comments that have all been stated. And that is, this idea came from a really good place. We all were so wowed by the student candidates that we interviewed that we wanted to give this group of students, let alone those that come after them, an opportunity to serve, because alas, some of them are going to be seniors next year and graduate. So this is their opportunity. But I also, as one who along with Mayor Haworth, were on the council that initially introduced the idea of having student representatives on these commissions, want to reiterate that the idea here was for them to serve as equals on this commission. This was not a play job. This was not just a builder for their applications for colleges, but to allow them to fully engage.
Great, yeah.
And they've really added tremendous value. So, um, hearing about the logistical issues is what caused me to change face, just as was articulated by Councilmember Sherillian. And it's for that reason why I think we should move forward with the member-at-large positions for the adults.
Okay.
And we rededicate ourselves to coming up with more opportunities for students. There was a Student Youth Environmental Sustainability Commission at one point.
Something, yeah.
After COVID, that was not reintroduced. Obviously, it needs to be staffed, but we can talk about that at a future meeting.
Yeah, with the deputy city manager. I can be funny too. Okay, yeah, it goes fast. Okay, all right, so let us move on to the nominations.
Let's go.
Great discussion, as always. Okay, so Cultural Arts Commission, right? Seat number six?
Yes, and I also provided new voting sheets, they're in yellow.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Wait, wait a minute, which one?
It's the yellow one now.
Well, you can choose.
It's still the same.
It's still the same?
No, they're different.
How are they different?
Um, we put the member-at-large, um, first, the first two.
Okay, just go to seat number six.
But your notes, your notes are okay.
Yeah, they're fine.
It's just the order is gonna be a little off.
It, it's new, don't, yes.
Okay, got it.
So now you can.
Seat number six.
So we will begin with the Culture Arts Commission, member-at-large seat number six. We will begin with Councilmember Franklin.
Okay, well, it doesn't show that, but.
It does. Oh!
Yeah, it does change the order.
You're right.
We need another copy for Councilmember Franklin.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, you didn't have?
Oh, where?
It was in the packet that was on the table.
I probably grabbed it and threw it away just to see ordering.
There you go, we got one.
Particularly because it shows you going first, sir.
Yeah, we wanted, yeah.
I'll go Deborah Van Ness.
Okay.
I don't need no stinking forms.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Karen Tokashiki.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Uh, Van Ness.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Tokashiki, who currently serves on the commission, has served as his chair ably, and I'd like her to continue to be able to serve.
And I too want to nominate Tokashiki, because I know that she wants to continue serving, so.
Okay, so Karen Tokashiki and Deborah Van Ness move on to round one. Councilmember Tarnay?
Karen Tokashiki. That's all.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Karen and Van Ness.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Tokashiki, not that I have any adverse opinion on Ms. Van Ness, but just because Karen Tokashiki is the incumbent.
Mayor Haworth?
Tokashiki, and to know what he said.
And Van Ness and Karen. Karen?
Wait, are they both?
Yes.
Wait, they're both Van Nesses, they're both Karens, I mean. Right?
No, Deborah and Karen.
Oh, Deborah, sorry, golly gee whiz, okay, forgive me.
So we're in round two, is that correct?
Yes.
So my nomination would be Tokashiki.
Which is the same, Karen, Karen, right?
And Mayor Haworth?
Karen Tokashiki.
Karen Tokashiki.
And Councilmember Tarnay?
Tokashiki.
Karen Tokashiki.
Great.
Okay, so Karen Tokashiki will be appointed to the Culture Arts Commission, member-at-large seat number six. Next, we have the Library Commission, member-at-large seat number six. We will begin with nomination, Mayor Haworth?
Coburn? Or Shitza Coburn?
Braitman?
Uh, Councilmember Tarnay?
Marge Shitza Coburn?
Councilmember Sherillian?
Ferris.
And Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Anthony Ferguson.
Okay, so Alyssa Braitman, Anthony Ferguson, Amy Ferris, and Maria Shitza Coburn move on to round one.
Okay.
Councilmember Franklin?
Braitman and Ferris.
Shitza Coburn and Ferris?
Ferris and Coburn.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Sorry, I'm just keeping notes.
I'm, I'm sorry.
He's just taking notes.
Oh, okay.
Ferguson and Ferris.
And Mayor Haworth?
Ferguson and Coburn. This is funny.
Got it, it's.
Amazing.
Okay, so Anthony Ferguson, Amy Ferris, and Maria Shitza Coburn move on to round two.
My goodness.
Uh, we'll begin with Councilmember Tarnay?
I'm gonna go Ferris, please.
Ferris.
Bueller?
It was coming, you knew it was coming.
Amy Ferris.
Mayor Haworth?
I do like the name Amy. Ferris.
She likes blue.
And Councilmember Franklin?
Okay, I'll still vote for her. Of course, she needs your name to say out loud.
You're so, you're so open.
It's so open, he says.
Uh, Ferris, yeah.
All right.
All right, we're not gonna do the alternates right now.
Okay, so Amy, Amy Ferris will be appointed to Library Commission, member-at-large seat number six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Wow, you guys. Any, uh, item number 19, any AB 1234 reports? Okay. Item number 20. Consideration of a request by myself and Councilmember Tarnay to discuss potential funding options for the Roundhouse Aquarium.
Yes, I'll be, oh.
We got a third, thank you. Councilmember Sherillian? Okay, uh, future agenda items?
I guess I have one. Let me just get my notes here. Yeah, I'd like to ask the city attorney to provide, uh, to the city council a litigation update report and an, and an analysis about what matters go into the retainer and which matters are major projects. Should we separate those two?
Would that be a close session?
So we don't really need a second on that, because I'm already preparing a litigation update as the mayor and the mayor pro tem, remember, we used to do this on a regular basis. So I am preparing a litigation update, but also because there's newer council members, I'd, I'd like to explain to them in writing, um, what goes under the retainer, what's a major project, how, how do things transform from a, um, a routine matter to a major project? And so if that's the wishes of the council, I can give that report, and no seconds needed.
Is that, does that suffice?
Yes.
Okay, and is there something else you wanted to, did you say?
No.
Okay.
That's it.
Uh, is there a city manager report?
No, no report this evening.